Test one, two, one, two.
Good evening. This is the Everett School Committee meeting of Monday, March 6, 2023. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Student Representative Riley Avalar.
Present.
Mr. McLaughlin. Mr. Barrows.
Present.
Ms. Cardelo.
Here.
Ms. Christiano.
Present.
Ms. Lambert.
Present.
Mayor Di Maria.
Here.
Mr. Marcus.
Here.
Mr. La Monica.
Present.
Ms. Sarni. Chairman Mangan.
Present.
Nine members present. Nine members present. We do our call. Would everyone please join me in saluting the flag?
Let's salute the flag of the United States of America and to a republic where its hands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Madam Superintendent, if you could eat them, item number three, please, on the record.
Yes, Roman numeral three is the reading of the records from February 6, 2023.
Make a motion to waive the reading and place on file.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Lambert, seconded by Mr. Barrows, to waive the reading of the records for February 6th. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, excuse me, if we could, I would indulge the membership. I know we're going to go a little bit out of turn tonight, so before we get to public comment, so we have Ms. Avalar, so she's not here all night, I would like to ask to have a motion to take item number five off the table so she can do her student representative report.
So move, Mr. Chairman. Second motion.
So we have a motion by Ms. Cardelo, seconded by Mr. McLaughlin, to take item number five, report of the student representative, off the table. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Ms. Avalar, the floor is yours.
Good evening. Winter sports have come to an end with both girls' and boys' basketball teams making it to the MIAA state tournament, as well as the boys' track team finishing 18th at their all-state championship. This winter sports banquet will be held on March 14th to commemorate their accomplishments this season. Currently, EHS has been gearing up for spring sports, with softball, baseball, outdoor track, and tennis signups being this week, and lacrosse tryouts commencing in two weeks. Spring sports will officially start on March 20th. On Tuesday, February 14th, Everett High STEM Club, led by Dr. Siders and Dr. Backland, had an unofficial competition at If Swish High School. Although coming third overall, feedback and commentary on the electric tides, presentations, and racing skills were excellent. They have been invited to join other racing teams at Nationals in Miami this April. On February 17th, Everett High held its 2023 Talent Show after school. There was a large turnout and many amazing performances, including a guitar solo of Hotel California, a group of boys performing Candy Rain, a dance routine to Thriller, and a piano-slinging performance of Bad Day. But our winning performances were a cover of Let You Break My Heart Again, an a cappella of Cry Me a River, and a first-place going-to-a-piano performance of If I Ain't Got You. EHS's theater company won the preliminary round of the METG Theater Festival with the production of Loom, and advanced to the semifinals on March 18th. There were multiple individual All-Star Awards for makeup design, along with acting and sound design. EHS students have been given an opportunity for an internship at K-8 schools. EHS students who have good academic standing and attendance have an opportunity to get a head start in their teaching career. The students get assigned a school and a teacher. They go to the schools on Tuesdays and Thursdays from 8:30 to 2:30. During their time, they help and observe their assigned teachers. I spoke to an intern, Adam Pettifor, about his experience. He explained how he helped with ELL kids because he's bilingual, and describes his work as being the, quote, "teacher's little helper." The EHS students started in February, and the internship ends in May, with an option to stay until June. In addition to experience they gain, they also get paid for their time. This program is run by Mr. McGowan and Ms. Simmons.
Thank you, Ms. Avalar. Any questions?
Chairman, accept the student representative's report. It's on file.
We have a motion by Mr. McLaughlin, and seconded by Ms. Sarni, to accept the student representative's report and place it on file. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Back to item number, Roman numeral four, Madam Superintendent.
Roman numeral four is public comment.
Make a motion to open the public comment.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Sarni, seconded by Mr. McLaughlin, to open up public comment. All those in favor? All those opposed? The ayes have it. We have, as you probably will, we have quite a lengthy list out here tonight, so we have 21 people. I'm going to allow up to three minutes. Please stick to that three minutes to speak. You know, try not to be repetitive over and over with the same thing, but ever, and just to keep things moving along, but certainly, if it goes just a little bit, I will give you a little bit of leniency, but I, please, I'd ask you, if it's possible, please stick to the three minutes or less, I would ask. The first person we have is Damian Allen. Mr. Allen, please come forward to the...
Good evening. Can you hear me? They never, they never tell you the spotlight is quite as bright. My name is Damian Allen. I'm a 10-year resident of Everett, moved here from Alden with my wife, and I am the proud parent of two students in Everett Public Schools, one at the Lafayette and a junior here at the high school. I am here tonight to express my enthusiastic support of Superintendent Priya Tahiani, and I apologize if I butchered your name. Just looking around and seeing a lot of the news and discussion of this upcoming contract renewal, I took it upon myself to find out a little bit more about the superintendent. And it is that time of year where employers are doing reviews. I just recently went through one myself, so I went to the source. I looked at the 2020 and 21 into 2021 and 22, those two years of reviews, and what I saw was written by many of you here tonight, including the mayor, and it was a comprehensive study of what leadership is. You see words used like "process-driven," "data-driven," "collaborative." These are buzzwords to some extent, but they describe competence. They describe leadership. And in looking at many of the accomplishments that the superintendent has brought to Everett Public Schools in her short time here, including probably half of which that went through COVID, I have witnessed no-cost summer enrichment programs to help out these children who were deprived of public school in person for an entire year, plus getting technology into the hands of students. I remember going through the lines to get the Chromebooks for my girls so that they could do remote learning back in March 2020. Language-based programs, not only for students but for parents, a wraparound holistic approach that takes into account the unique environment that we live in in Everett, a majority-minority community. And in doing so, we're not only providing solid structure to the students, but also empowering the parents so that they can participate more fully in the education of their children.
Excuse me, Mr. Allen. I don't mean to interrupt, but I just want to let you know you have about 30 seconds, so...
Thank you. I'll wrap it up by saying this, because there's a lot that I wanted to get to. I think in life, it's a great approach to not overthink the simple things. And the decision that we face here with renewing the superintendent's contract, to me, is remarkably easy. She was proficient in both years, as written by her peers, not the awards that she received for individual achievement, but by the members of this committee. And that's something that we have to take into account. When you have a superstar doing the good work for your community, for your children, you reward them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. The next person we have signed in is Wendy Post. Is Post?
Hi, everyone. My name is Wendy Post. Thank you all for allowing me to speak. I'm a lifelong Everett resident who attended Everett Public Schools, and I have two sons that have also attended Everett Public Schools. The vote before you today is very important for the children of this city. After all, isn't that what each of you were committed to by being members of the school committee? Let's not lose sight of the reason we are all here today, to ensure the future of our children and the leadership necessary to guide them. Superintendent Tahiani has showed us with dignity and grace her competency since 2019. She came to our city as a highly qualified and competent candidate, and has shown us all her extraordinary leadership skills, her talent to reach the children of Everett, and her vast knowledge of the school system. Her diversified leadership has not gone unnoticed, nor does the fact that she has made it a point to bridge the gaps between schools and families, many of which speak different languages. Her positive performance reviews in the past couple of years, along with her willingness to take on any obstacle she faces, has solidified her way in Everett. Please put the children first and vote Ms. Tahiani in. Politics has no business getting in the way of our schools. Remember, Everett's schools are Everett's pride. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Post. The next speaker we have is David Fortin.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, School Committee. My name is David Fortin. I'm from Ward Four. I'm requesting that when you vote tonight for Ms. Priya for renewal for her contract, you think carefully about your vote. She is an excellent administrator. She has bought, she has brought a favorable response to the needs of Everett and our children and our grandchildren, along with all children of Everett's schools. When you vote, please make it a public vote, in which we can hear what you and how you vote. Also, I request that if you give a negative vote, you give a reason, or even a positive one. You give a reason for voting, so we know where you stand and what is going on. We may be missing some things. We may not be, and I don't think we are. Where am I? As you know, we've had problems here with the mayor. We do not need him on the committee as a voting member, but that's another issue that will be taken up at another time. And that's my opinion, Mr. Mayor, not yours, not anybody else's, as I'm just...
Mr. Fortin, please, before, excuse me for interrupting, please direct everything towards the chair, not to anybody individual member, please.
Okay. I'm sorry. I apologize. My words to you are to vote your conscience, vote what's in your heart, and be able to provide a reason for your vote if and when asked. Inquiring minds, voters, and us snowflakes demand to know. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fortin. The next person we have is Ms. Maria Bustle.
The Urban Dictionary defines moral compass as a set of morals that leads people to make good choices. For the most part, this committee has made some great choices, but when it comes to one of the most important of votes, some members have forgotten that meaning. Let's take a look. We have a member that believes a department head job will be given to them if they vote a certain way. We have a member who is afraid a past digression will be brought forward if they don't vote a certain way. We have a member who believes their family members may not be able to keep their city jobs if they vote a certain way. We have a member who changes their political views depending on which way they stand to gain the most if they vote a certain way. We have a member who has done a 360 in their decision-making, changing his devotion to suit their needs. And lastly, we have a member who just wants to control everything. And then there also are the members who make choices based on what's best for the children. How about the members vote for what is best for the children, not themselves? Our children deserve continuity, stability, and a consistent school system. The system has been in enough turmoil. Your objective here tonight is to vote on the productivity, professionalism, and the merit of our superintendent, not on what best suits your needs. So take a hard look in the mirror, and if you can honestly say to yourself that you are doing what is best for the children, then more power to you. But just make sure you can put your head on your pillow at night and know that you did not compromise your moral compass for the wrong reason. And I respectfully request no retaliation nor retribution due to my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bustle. The next person we have is Ms. Peggy Serino.
Good evening. My name is Peggy Serino. I'm also a lifelong resident of Everett, went through the Everett Public Schools, went to college, and came back and taught for 34 years in the school system. Having read the superintendent's evaluation, I has my observation. There is an organization set up for school systems. You know who reports to whom? If you didn't, you would have total chaos. The superintendent reports to the school committee. If the school committee has questions, they ask the superintendent. If the school committee had questions for a specific person, the superintendent would have to arrange that because that's her job. M-class schoolers aren't what we would like them to be. Why? One word: the pandemic. The whole country didn't know what to do about school in the pandemic. You had children and parents working from home. We had to make sure the students had computers, and the parents that were working from home had to make sure the kids weren't playing video games at the same time they were supposed to be going to school. When they got back to school, they had to wear masks, be six feet apart. Teachers' desks had plexiglasses around them. It was a nightmare. Now we're trying to make up for lost time. It seems that there are some people who would like to hold the superintendent's It seems that there are some people who would like to hold the superintendent responsible for a pandemic that started in China. Cleaning. Overcrowded conditions don't help. When you have one group leaving the lunchroom and another coming in in minutes, you really don't have much time to empty the trash, sweep and mop the floors, and wipe the tables down. You can't sweep corridors when children and teachers are sitting and them working. You can't dust libraries when they're being divided and used as classrooms. Plus, you need money to hire the people to do the cleaning. Money. The present superintendent is getting $6 million less than the previous superintendent to run the school systems. Why? During COVID, the school committee was given $471,000 at the last minute, but it couldn't spend the money and time. So the money had to go back to the City Hall and the guy in the corner office. The guy in the corner office could have given it back to the school, but chose to return it to the state. Why? The guy in the corner office has people who campaigned for him, calling people up and saying, "We don't have overcrowded schools." These are kids that just don't live in the city. We've been lied to before, and it's happening again. The superintendent has already addressed this and has put a policy in place. But our schools are overcrowded, and we need Pope John renovated. There are those of us who want to move forward, and there are those of us who want to live in the past. Unfortunately, the superintendent is caught in the political crosshairs due to no fault of her own and certainly shouldn't be responsible for what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Serino. The next person we have is Mr. Shane McNally.
Evening. My name is Shane McNally. I'm an Everett long-term resident, teacher, and parent of three. So I'm making this comment on behalf of myself, obviously, and my wife, Lenka McNally. So we're asking you to extend the superintendent's contract tonight. So basically, as I see it, you have two choices. You have racism or anti-racism. You have the past, go back to the past, or embrace the present and the future. You can use students, families, and educators as pawns in your own internal squabbles, or you can empower them. So option one, though, is not to extend the superintendent's contract. So by doing that, you'd clearly, you'd clearly be advocating for a return to the past, going back to the past, and racism, basically. That's what you'd be advocating for. It's pretty clear. And so, but for years, you know, the evidence is clear. For years and years, you were, many of you were complicit in allowing abuse after abuse to happen. You knew, you knew, we all knew enough. But when blatant racism, and, you know, blatant racism happened very recently and not so recently in our community, most of you couldn't even call it out clearly. So, but now you're asking us to just, to trust your best judgment about, you know, somebody else, basically, somebody who'd be replacing her. So. But, you know, option two is that you would extend the superintendent's contract. So question is, why would you do that? So one, I think, a couple of reasons. In schools, I've noticed, the conversations about race and equity, they're not taboo anymore. I think that's a healthy thing. We're focused on the social-emotional aspect of kids. I mean, education, that's a healthy thing. And finally, finally, we're talking about anti-racism. We're practicing it. Things have started happening in our schools to make them more reflective of the people and the, of the families. And, you know, hiring leaders of color, it's a good thing. It's a good thing. I think you should think less about your own internal, you know, alliances, your feuds. Because really, ultimately, the people who matter the most, they're not here tonight, most of them. And so, because, you know, maybe they're working, maybe they're working, maybe they're not paying attention because they have terrible experiences with politicians, and quite frankly, you might not have changed that very much. Or maybe they're just not, haven't arrived in Everett yet. Maybe they're still coming here on the way. They might be walking across a desert. They might be crossing a river, an angry river, on a boat. They might be in the cargo hold of a truck. But, you know, and when they get there, they'll have had to deal with, they might have had to deal with gangs, they might have had to deal with ICE, the federal government, poverty, English language, and the list goes right on. So when I think of them, when I think of them, it's a very, very simple question, really. So I think, lastly, I'm just going to say, please, think of the people who are struggling. Think of the people with untapped potential out there and people from home. We all need to listen and learn. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Mr. McNally. The next speaker we have is Reverend Milan De Rosiers. Reverend?
Honorable Mayor, my, Mayor Di Maria, Madam Superintendent, and all honorable members of the school committee. Good evening, and thank you for giving us this opportunity to address you this evening. My name is Mirland De Rosier, Associate Pastor of NCC Church, not in Everett, in Waltham, but Director of Everett Asian Community Center. I've been in this community for over 23 years, but serve as Director of the HCC for now eight years. Ladies and gentlemen, brothers and sisters, representative democracy relies on the informed trust of the citizens. And so I am here today on behalf of my community, on behalf of many parents, students, families that we serve, and also on behalf of fellow organizations in this city, to ask you for one thing and one thing only, to renew the contract of the superintendent. I will not lay before you her credentials, her efficiency. I think that would be repetitive. It's pretty clear. But I would ask you to vote on the following grounds. She has been, for the very short time, impressively making an impact on even the lives of the students. For the very first time, immigrant-led community organizations that serve and represent so many, now almost more than half, in this city have uttered that she is just good for the kids, for the students, for this school. And so I will ask you tonight, I do not know her personally, but I have come to know personally her efficiency. So many of us in the immigrant community, and my fellow friends, Brazilians, Latinos, and also some Americans right here in the city, have come to me and said to me, "I have not heard from you yet. How come you have not spoken?" And I did say that the time, when the Lord says that the time is right, I will do it. And the Lord has told me that the time is right tonight, and that's the reason that I'm here asking you, begging you,
Reverend, I don't mean to interrupt, I just want to give you 30 more seconds.
To do the right thing, to be humble. Forget anything else. Just be humble, because humility is not weakness. It is strength under control. Vote for the kids. Vote for the students. Vote to renew this contract. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Reverend. The next person we have is Mr. Fred Capone.
Good evening. Fred Capone, lifelong Everett resident. I speak in support of the superintendent this evening. Everett's student population is one of the most diverse in the Commonwealth. The current superintendent is perhaps the most diverse individual to hold that position in our city's history. At no time has the student population of our community been better able to identify with their superintendent. Despite being tested by a pandemic and dealing with a hostile atmosphere provided by some impositions of power in this city, her performance as superintendent has been much more than proficient. In fact, her efforts have been recognized by her peers. Additionally, many parents, teachers, and most important, the students, appreciate her leadership. From my own personal experience as a former elected official, as a private citizen, and as a member of several charitable organizations that interact with the school department, every experience I have had with the superintendent has been both positive and professional. An extension of her contract should be one of the easiest decisions that you will ever have to make as a member of the school committee. It's time that members of this body stop acting like children and start advocating for our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Capone. The next person we have is Nancy Sanchetta.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Nancy Sanchetta. I'm an Everett resident, a teacher, and a parent. Like many people, I'm wary of change and was concerned when Priya Talahani was appointed superintendent. Within weeks, we were in the middle of a global pandemic, and all of us had to pull together to help our students learn and thrive in a new educational environment. During those first few months, a very odd honeymoon period for sure, Superintendent Talahani did a pretty good job. As we moved back into a more familiar educational style, however, our new superintendent started to show some of the demanding and inflexible traits, and even favoritism and intimidation tactics that many of us have experienced. That style of control with demanding management rather than collaborative leadership may be the perfect fit for some districts, but not for Everett. Even so, it would be reasonable and professional to extend her contract until the end of June of 2024. But after that, it seems that we, the people who live and work here regularly, may be ready for something a little less authoritarianism. I certainly don't fault Superintendent Talahani for her style, and I applaud her accomplishments, but I don't see enough evidence to support her as a good fit for our city, in spite of what strangers from other communities may say. While Superintendent could not control the pandemic, she could lead our school's response during the summer of 2021, when the state set out guidelines for schools to follow, including having teams in during the summer to work on back-to-school plan. Our schools were a ghost town. In what appeared to be an effort to control who was hired for certain positions, her administrative team allowed hundreds of students and thousands of students to suffer poor school openings. What qualified school administrators would endorse that? Even now, there are positions that have not been posted for months. And less qualified people were appointed to certain positions when we need every bit of talent and dedication we have to serve our community. We've had good teachers quit. We already have some who are looking for new jobs, and many others were just let go. We cannot develop the support systems and solid education our students need if we have a revolving door of terrified staff. We have been struggling with MCAS scores for some time. It really isn't a very fair test. She's right about that. But unfortunately, it's what the state mandates, and we have to deal with it. In the last few years, our scores have dropped lower than they were before the pandemic, and where other cities have rebounded, we have not. While we may be performing similarly to like communities, with a 20% to 24% passing rate, that still means nearly 80% of our students are not doing well. Everett is near the very bottom of the list for schools for the state's for MCAS scores. And that just isn't the way we do things here. Since the mid-1900s, Everett has had winning sports teams. Babe Ruth played baseball a couple hundred yards from where we are now. We have Super Bowl wins, banned citations, and national STEM competitions and championships that show just what our students are capable of. Members of our community will not settle for being just as good as the worst teams. We are winners in every battle we choose to fight, and the education of our children is the most important battle we could ever wage. Superintendent Talahani just isn't the right leadership for Everett. We need a leader who will work with our unique community, our working-class community, and not call in a media circus of ivory tower academics and political elites. We need someone who will lead us out of the bottom of the state rankings, not further into it. More than that, we need someone who will lead our children into post-high school success in one of the richest educational and demanding job markets in the country. Our students deserve the very best education, for that is not only the way of wisdom, happiness, and true success, but the way for them to make the most of themselves and to be the greatest service of the world. I think it's time for a change. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Sanchetta. The next person we have is Mary Fortin.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Mary Fortin. I've been with you before. That was quite a negative speech I just heard. Never heard that about Travy before. We only know how good she is. She's amazing. She pulled through all of that stuff. The kids love her. Grandchildren love her. She's honest. Now, someone else came before our board and said, when we asked for Pope John, and said, "If the school committee and the common council committee agreed that this is what they wanted, it would be done." The school committee agreed yes. Common council said yes. And someone turned their back and said, "No, we're not doing that." I don't call that a responsible person, especially one that, not one that should be selecting a superintendent of schools. Priya has stayed on top of everything. She has been there in and out for all of the kids. The parents love her. You may have a disgruntled teacher once in a while, but that's not anything new in any school. But she has been there. She knows the kids. She's brought them through so much that we need to permanently extend her contract, not just not to the end of '24, but forever. She is a keeper. The last one wasn't.
Thank you, Ms. Fortin. The next speaker is Mr. Vincent Lawrence Dixon. Mr. Dixon?
Thank you and good evening. And thank you for hearing my remarks. My name is Vincent Lawrence Dixon. I'm a member of the Education Committee of the Mystic Valley Area Branch of the NAACP, which includes Everett, Medford, Malden, Winchester, and this surrounding area. Please do not be surprised that I will now greet you, Jindobry, Jindrasia, and Yanni Pakcima, which is Polish for "good day, good evening, and how is it, friend, that you are?" Because, of course, the Polish language was one of the second languages here in the nearby Chelsea and here and Cambridge and other places. I grew up as an integrated American, but my mother's family spoke Polish. And it was a very important thing to understand the balance between becoming an integrated American and being somebody of Polish heritage. And that is a very important thing here. The superintendent looks like the students in many ways. She encourages them, as Oprah Winfrey has on a nearby billboard, encouragement is crucial to education. People who may be friends, neighbors, even part of a family, need positive models. You may think that I appear white, but I've always grown up feeling I was a Slavic male, appreciating the culture that is now appreciated of that. And my father had criticized my mother and myself as I was growing up when he got angry as being dumb Polacks. But when John Paul II became Pope, he said, "Hmm, if a Pole could be Pope, maybe the Polish people were okay," and I shouldn't have criticized you for being of that heritage. And that Pa- And that positive modeling is crucial here. And it was crucial, literally, that John Paul II provided a model for my father that Poles could be significant leaders and could embrace different cultures and diversity. And that is crucial. The current superintendent of schools has set high standards and hopes, with the help of many, to raise those standards. This vote for each of you as members of the Everett School Committee should be easy. A yes vote is one that will honor your commitment and your oath of office to faithfully execute the laws. The parents, the students, and the staff, I think, will come to see not just the quality leadership that many urban public school systems seek, but also the sense of caring that I believe she wishes to instill across the Everett system. Perhaps nature and/or other spiritual forces intervened by the storm that delayed this vote a few days. In any case, thinking about this decision hopefully has given you some sense of calm and opportunity to do a good thing that will help guide your public school system for several years to come, in a good way. While this is my individual opinion, I do believe that everyone will be well-served if you extend her contract. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon. The next person we have is Mr. Benjamin Murray.
Hello, my name is Benjamin Murray. I am an educator in Everett, a parent, a resident for almost 15 years. So I'm a stakeholder on basically every level. I've sat across the bargaining table from Superintendent Taliani and others in her office. So I've looked into their faces when money was literally on the table and found them to be exceedingly fair and prepared in their negotiations with us. As far as stories of bullying and intimidation goes, I think this district is very, very familiar with bullying and intimidation, and very familiar with what that looks like and how people behave when it happens. For people to get up here and talk about bullying and intimidation, in point of fact, proves that it's not there, because five years ago, those people would not have said a peep. Everyone's spoken about her qualifications, her awards, her proficient evaluations. So let me just talk about the future of Everett. That's what's on the line now. If you vote to let her go, in essence, firing her, what you are telling the rest of the state is that Everett is not a serious city, that Everett does not care about its residents, does not care about its children, does not care about its property values, that it is happy to be mired in mediocrity, and to hurt its residents for their own... Honestly, I don't even see the political gain here. This seems like an ego play more than anything else. So that's what's on the line. On the line is the future of the city. That is what's on the line. If you let her go tonight, you will not see a qualified superintendent candidate come across your table again. It will be hand-picked cronies, as has been the fact in the school system and in this city up until very, very recently. The students and families in the city are ready for representation. They deserve leadership that cares, and they deserve a future. So vote that way tonight. Vote for the future of Everett. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. The next person we have, Ms. Tiana... Excuse me, Tiana Allen.
Hello, council members. My name is Tiana Allen. I am a 10-year resident of Everett, and I am a current junior in the school system. I am here as not one of, but as the most important group of people to have an opinion on this matter, and that is the students. I am here to speak tonight on Priya's character. And so yesterday, I went to an event hosted by the Art Lab, and it was an event all about the works of art of a junior in this here school. And one of the first faces I saw when I walked into that building was Priya's. And she was there for all two hours and more of the event, showing nothing but warm smiles, genuine care, and just pure hospitality for everybody in that room. And seeing that amount of involvement from a superintendent is something I have not seen in all 10 of my years in Everett schools. And seeing that, I feel, is so unbelievably important for a member of the school committee to be involved with the students, to be involved with who they represent. I feel it's incredibly important for students to feel connected by the people who are speaking for them when they cannot be there. And I feel that Priya is an excellent representative of the students, what they mean, and what I feel is very important is diversity. Priya is one of the most familiar faces I see when I look around this room. She is a woman of color, and more than 80% of students in Everett High are of color. And for us to be represented by someone who does not represent the majority of our students, I feel is not fitting. I feel that Priya is an excellent representative of what it means to be a student in these systems, to what it means to be a true Everett resident, and what it means to understand the policies of what it means to be part of Everett, to have pride, to have excellent leadership, and to really represent the students. And in my time of knowing Priya, I have felt nothing but represented, nothing but kindness, nothing but genuine respect back and forth. And I feel like that is something that students really need to hear and really need to understand. When students see someone that looks exactly like them, holding amazing leadership skills and positions, it drives the students to do more. It drives the students to reach for positions that felt so unbelievably out of reach. To be so close to someone holding such an important position means to drive themselves to do more. It means to drive Everett to do more. Students are Everett's future. And when students see what it means to be a leader, it means that the students are Everett's future and that they will make Everett an amazing city to come. And I feel that when we vote to renew Priya's contract means to vote in favor of Everett's future and to give Everett amazing leaders, and to make sure that the students know that being a leader is in reach, making these decisions and holding these wonderful positions is in reach. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. The next person we have is Ms. Janice Locke.
I'm here to support renewing the superintendent's contract. Oh, this is a... Is it on? Okay. This is a no-brainer for you. Her evaluation, for the most part, was positive. I didn't see any comment where I would think, oh, no, she has to go. Whatever negative she received can be approved upon. Isn't that the purpose of an evaluation? To let the person you're evaluating know where you'd like improvement before giving her the axe? I know your no vote would not be because the superintendent is not underperforming. I'd like to hear one real reason from any of you during your discussion of why renewing the superintendent's contract would be detrimental to the students in the city. One good reason. If you don't have one, then renew her contract. In a city where the administration is mostly white, where the teachers are mostly white, but the student body is 80% children of color, it would behoove you to keep a superintendent who is representative of the student body. Let the students know this, too, can be a position you can aspire to in the city of Everett. Send that message, not the message that you can be a sex offender and work in city government. To coin a phrase, the guy in the corner office has made the super's job very difficult. Even still, she persisted. You know why? She wants to make the education of the students she serves a successful one. We all know the reason you would vote against renewing the super's contract is because the guy in the corner office does not want her here. We all know that. Is it because her skin is brown? Is it because she's female? Is it because she's smart? What is it? Please support the students. A vote against the super... Sorry for... No disrespect, but it's easier to say "super." A vote against the super would mean you are basing your decision on what the guy in the corner office wants and not what is good for the students. A vote against the super would mean you are basing your decision on what the guy in the corner office wants and not what is good for the students. Pick a side. Who do you serve? The mayor or the students? It's as simple as that. Everyone is watching. Everyone is watching. The Globe article, WGBH, everybody is watching. You may not have long in the seat you are currently holding if your vote is to support the guy in the corner office instead of the students, and as the students might say,
Thank you, Ms. Locke. The next person we have is Ms. Sandy Giuliano.
Good evening, Sandy Giuliano. Sometimes I wish we were back in earlier times when social media didn't exist and the constant information or misinformation wasn't always at our fingertips. I do like Facebook. It's a great place to wish each other a happy birthday or anniversary, to share pictures of our grandchildren, or even the occasional joke. What I don't like about it are the stories that spread quickly with no regard for any truth or lies. Two such stories had me wondering just that. Should I believe them, or they just rumors? One was about a sitting member of this committee who may have been offered a job for their vote against the superintendent. I've known this person for many years and truly hope there is no truth to that story. I guess we'll find out tonight. The second was about a former counselor who apparently felt compelled to call people to lie about school overcrowding. This one, I don't find hard to believe. This counselor has lied repeatedly for the mayor over the years, so why start now? Maybe he or she is planning to try and regain the council seat in November. Doesn't hurt to have the backing from the corner office. Again, time will tell. It's my hope that each of you took some time this weekend, as I did, reviewing the evaluations that most of you filled out regarding the superintendent and her job performance. Most of her ratings were proficient in every category. Those are your words, not hers, mine, or any other person's. If you bothered to refresh your memories, then it would be apparent that your only choice is to vote to extend her contract. To do less than that would truly be unjust. The superintendent has shown herself to be an educated, intelligent, articulate woman who handled everything the position threw at her in a precise, efficient manner. Please do the right thing tonight and offer her the extension she has so rightfully earned. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Giuliano. The next speaker is Ms. Robin Babcock.
Good evening, superintendents, school committee, parents, students. You know, I came up here and I wanted to be incredibly neutral. My name is Robin Babcock. My daughter Amelia is a sophomore in the high school. I think that many people may know her, actually, from her participation in this community for sports, for music. You know, when the... Change is hard. It takes time for change to happen, and it takes a lot of time for people to feel comfortable with it. So far, I've heard two criticisms tonight, that I heard, and one I felt concerned about, and one I did not. Of course, scores don't measure success. I am a teacher. Standardized scores do not measure success. We've seen a couple of scores, and it also doesn't represent the success of our superintendent. You're going... You don't measure a person's behavior on how kids score on a test after a pandemic. So I feel that that... If I had my way, they'd be gone. So I discount that. I also think that change is hard. I feel that you... We had a superintendent for 30 years in a position, and that when we had a change, that some people just didn't feel as comfortable. That's the truth. And that the pandemic, we say, oh, that teachers are leaving the schools left and right. And that's not really it. People are leaving education left and right. This is not an issue of the superintendent. This is an issue of what's happened in the pandemic, and the impact that that has had on the field of education. That's a larger issue that isn't going to be solved in our city, our state, or even our country unless we make some changes to the levels of education. From my experience, from... I can't speak for teachers. I can't. From the teachers that I know and that I have good, close contact with, most of the ones that I have spoken with feel very comfortable with the level of supervision they have. They're not used to actually being able to have an opinion without it being cut down or controlled. In my experience, teachers that have been extremely important in my child's life were let go from the city, are moved because they spoke up against the former superintendent, and then they suddenly didn't have a job. So tonight, I'm asking you to renew the contract of the superintendent, because she's building relationships in this community, relationships between students, between parents, between the community itself. She looks like our students. She cares tremendously about their students. If anybody knows who I am, I probably have your picture, because I go to just as many events as she is, and the one person I can count on being there with me is her as well. She cares about these students. She wants them to succeed. Her contract needs to be reviewed, renewed. I know for a fact, I've... I vote in every election, and I know how people vote. Vote for the students, not for anybody else's benefit or anybody else's interest. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Babcock. The next speaker we have is Amelia Maria Babcock.
Hi, my name is Amelia Maria Babcock. I'm a student at Everett High, and I'm also the sophomore class president. I'm just going to keep this short and sweet. I'm here speaking from a student's point of view. You can tell Priya, in her work, she's not doing this for herself, she's doing this for the students. She's doing it for us. I really feel as though she cares about us. She's present at every school event. You can see the positive effect she has, she leaves at our school. It's really nice knowing you have someone like her supporting us all the time. I'm 100% in favor of renewing our superintendent's Priya's contract. I hope you make the right decision based off what you think is right for the students, just like Priya does. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Babcock. The next speaker is Steve Ionia. This is... I'm sorry, Steve. I just want to apologize. The name, the way it was written in here, it's written in... It's not written in IONIA, it's I-O-N-I-A, so I apologize.
That's fine. Good Italian name. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. So what has the superintendent and her staff done that's so awful? Defend the students after Anthony De Perro's racist tweets? Fight against Malden Transportation getting 4.5% increase while under contract? Why was the mayor so hell-bent on just this one vendor? Should we check the donor list? The mayor's defense for this was all city projects run 25% over budget. Maybe that explains why our taxes continue to go up, even with the casino. The superintendent pushed to renovate Pope John to alleviate overcrowding in all the elementary schools by creating a junior high school. She came up with data, facts, and... She came up with data, facts, and figures. What did the mayor offer? As Pope John was discussed with the community, he took off for three weeks to Capri, Italy. The superintendent proposed a $30 to $50 million for a functional school to give the teachers and kids a decent place to learn. The mayor preached he wanted to go with the gold standard for $76 million. Then he said he would do whatever the school committee and city council wanted to do. Well, that was a lie. When he talks about renovating, he throws out $100 million in taxes. Just more scare and propaganda tactics. Did you ever hear the mayor mention the impact to our taxes for any of the parks renovations, our flowers, our lawsuits, our settlements? Only when he talks about schools. What do you think? Everett is very fortunate to have a very talented woman leading our school department. One recognized by her peers as the number one superintendent in Massachusetts. Why would we want to push her out? Why? Please vote for the extension. The kids need to know the adults are here for them, not against them. I am standing because I stand for what is right. And all the school committee members should do the same. Do not be afraid. Keep Priya on for good. She is one of the most outstanding superintendents in the state. And you all know it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ionaco. The next speaker we have on our list is Lillian Gorham. Lillian? All right, someone signed to end and she's not here. Okay. The next person we have is Paula Steriti.
Tonight should be a night of celebration for Everett to celebrate hiring an intelligent, dedicated, and caring person who happens to be a woman of Kawa. Ms. Talahani came to this country as a young girl with her family and faced many of the same challenges our students face today. Learning new customs and a new language. She knows firsthand their struggle. To be perfectly honest, I think the whole city, especially those school committee members here tonight participating in the mayor's ploy to get rid of superintendent should be ashamed and embarrassed. I hope the rumors aren't true about the mayor pressuring and making promises to you to vote no when the facts say to vote yes. Some current members were around during the Forrester years and rubber stamped his six-year contract extension without question. Forrester's tension, tenure was plagued by controversy long before the lawsuits in 2018. It took the courage of three brave women who refused to settle to finally bring Forrester to justice, now a convicted felon and a registered sex offender. I ask, where was the school committee members? Please don't say you didn't know. With a number of settlements and NDAs signed off by the school committee, it speaks volumes on who was being protected and who, and it wasn't the kids, the staff, or our tax dollars. After reading the police investigation report, I understand why the school committee felt the need to go outside the city for a new superintendent. I asked the school department to release the investigation report done in 2018 by Regina Ryan. We pay for it. Let the residents see who else was involved and who was still working for the school department and the city, and who the mayor has in mind to possibly replace the superintendent. A couple of months ago, you rated her all, her performance proficient. None of the comments provided any grounds for not renewing her contract. How high have you set the bar for her versus how low was the bar for Forrester? Maybe you were questioning the students' performance scores. Maybe the mayor can answer why he cut almost $6 million from the school's annual budget since she replaced Forrester. Or ask why he didn't reimburse the school department the $471,000 in COVID-related expenses. Or why he preferred to send back $2.3 million of COVID relief money back to the state instead of offering it to the superintendent and the school department. And let's not forget the $47 million in APF funds, APF funds that we've had for almost two years. What does $15,000 in, in funding for addressing educational disparities say to the students out of $47 million? Yes, that's right. $15,000 out of $47 million. What has the superintendent done that has turned you sour on her? Speak out about DePiero. For those who think this was a one-op's, oops moment, I ask you to watch any city council meeting in 2020 and see how disrespectful and hostile Mr. DePiero, Rosa de Flora, and the mayor were to the councillor, to the councillor, Geralyn Adrian. The mayor wants to blame the work, the walkout on the superintendent and her staff. As the, as the student rep said, stop asking how they organized and why they walked out. One would think Everett would be proud to have selected a superintendent who, over the past two years, has been recognized by the state for her many accomplishments and achievements, especially after the scandalous years of Forrester. Your vote tonight will either be a giant step forward or a giant step backwards. One, a vote will reinforce Everett's reputation of being a racist and corrupt city.
Ms. Steriti, I apologize for interrupting. I just want to give you a heads up, 30 seconds.
Okay. Your vote tonight will either be a giant step forward or a giant step backwards. A no vote will reinforce Everett's reputation as being a racist and corrupt city. Please do the right thing and extend her contract and start working with her instead of against her. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Steriti. The next person we have is Johnny Popolo. Signed in, somebody signed him in.
There's some people that came in after the she came.
All right, I will ask that after. Mr. Popolo's not here? Oh, I'm sorry. Popolo.
Mr. Chair, Superintendent. John Popolo, Everett. Good evening. Tonight you have a very serious job to do. Make a decision on superintendent's career. She has proven to be a true Everett leader and a leader amongst her peers deserving a new contract. Tonight you must put a certain person's influence on your votes aside. And make your own decision about the superintendent's proven abilities, leadership, skills, and her outstanding demonstrated job performance. She has established a credible, inclusive, educational environment for everyone. I hope you all vote independently with your conscience tonight. As the significant majority of your evaluations, as we've heard repeatedly tonight, it supports a new contract. Anything else would be hypocritical. Anyone that has not submitted a performance evaluation should recuse themselves. If you didn't have the courage to provide development feedback, coaching, or recognize accomplishments in a written performance evaluation, how can you now pass judgment? Recuse yourself for your lack of engagement in the process. For those that did make the effort, I can say, after reading all the evaluations, there did not appear to be anything that would prevent a contract renewal. I strongly support the superintendent contract extension based on the professionalism and honesty that she has brought to Everett's challenging education system and difficult political work environment. There is still a lot of work needed to continue to change the culture here. She brings honesty, integrity, credibility, and professionalism. She is Everett's change agent following Forrester's long reign of terror. Let's talk about honesty. What is honesty in Everett? For starters, how about being truthful? Examples here. School committee member Di Maria stated a complete falsehood last Monday to the city council and residents by boldly stating that his school committee attendance was impeccable. School committee member Di Maria, do you even know the definition of the word impeccable? It means flawless.
Mr. Popolo, I'm ruling you out of order. I gave the warning earlier. You're not to direct anything towards any individual member. You took just the chair and point and look at anybody and direct it. The process of public comment is to dress stuff for the chair. There's freedom of speech, but there's also, you have to be respectful of the members here, whether they agree or disagree with you.
Well, I missed, I wasn't here. I missed that.
Well, I'm sorry. That goes for the council too. You're not, you always, you know, you spoke many times to the council.
Yeah, I have.
You address things to the chair, whatever your concern is, positive, negative, whatever it may be, everything is dressed to the chair, not an individual membership, a member. If you have something to say, you say it to the chair and that's it. Not to look at a certain member, direct, it's not a conversation between you.
All right, I was looking down. I apologize. I'll continue. All right. So you even know what definition it is. It's flawless. Your attendance is not impeccable, but an unacceptable disaster while representing the children. You missed 14 out of 23 meetings, 61% absent. That's an F in my book. The exact opposite of what you call impeccable.
Chairman, that's inaccurate. It's inaccurate.
I got the list right here.
It's inaccurate.
Please, no cross-debate. Everything is dressed in, Mr. Mayor Di Maria, when it's time, you'll have your time to speak, whatever. But it's, it's, there's no, just going back to, it's not, it's not a conversation.
Do you want me to present the chair, the attendance list?
No, that, that's fine, Mr. Popolo.
2022?
That's fine, Mr. Popolo.
I have.
You have one minute left.
You are also untruthful for the residents, to the residents, school committee, and city council stating you would do whatever they decided with Pope John. Well, that wasn't true either. You also are untruthful about school overcrowding, stating no children were being taught in hallways, cafeterias, or storage closets. Do you see, there seems to be a serious pattern here? There's a trend. Were you also untruthful about witnessing kids living under stairwells, closets, and hallways? That was interesting about your tall tale, but what did you do about it? Did you call Children's Services? Did you contact ISD? Talk to landlords, the parents? What about the $370 million that returned to the state for a school because we couldn't find a location? We have lots of serious leadership issues here. In wrapping up, superintendent, her resume, her career accomplishments are amazing. Let her continue the good work she is doing, changing the longstanding culture here behind some not-so-good superintendents. Let's vote for superintendent extension and give the city something positive to celebrate. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Popolo. The next person on the list is Mr. Bill Thompson.
Good evening, all the Everett City Council members and mayor. I didn't write anything down tonight. I've spoken in front of the council members before. I believe it was a couple times for the superintendent's being, getting her contract renewed from her performance, her rewards, et cetera. We all know this. Now, I know in life, I don't know everything, but there's three sides to every story. One person's side, the other person's side, and the truth. Okay? I know there's friction. I don't know all the details and I personally don't care. I'm not a politician. My definition of politicians are when all is said and done, all is more is said than done.
Mr. Thompson, please direct towards me. Thank you.
I'm speaking, everybody. Like I said. Okay. I've spoken to people sitting in these chairs. Not everybody. And I don't like being misled or not being, I'm truthful. You ask me a question, you get the truth back. I'm upfront, I could, you like me, you don't like, I don't care. I don't look, I look at people, good heart, if you've got a good-hearted person and you're a caring person, you're okay. I hear a lot tonight, person of color, this, hey, united we will stand, divided we will fall. And, you know, comments about, oh, you don't go to a gunfight without a gun. I, I, I hear, I hear that. I think, what's his name said it? Sammy the Bull said it to Johnny, about John Gotti, when they knocked off Castellano in New York City years ago. But anyway, I want to say this, I don't think I'm going to change anybody's mind, one way or the other. But remember this, if you're going to dig one grave, dig two. The second one's for yourself. And with that, I say, give Ms. Priya the vote on her contract, which she has earned and she deserved. And that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. If there is anybody else out there, you know, I'll extend the, sir, if you could, if you could state your name for the record, please.
My name is Kisan Upadia. I'm a longtime resident here in Everett, Massachusetts, and a small store owner here in Everett on Main Street as well. And I'm a published author and a writer. Second book is on the way. Just want to let you know, I love Priya. She's my sister. Priya, born in India, I was born in India too. Although I was not raised in India, I was raised in Nepal, migrated to this country, and became an immigrant, just like many of us are here. This is a diverse, very diverse state, Massachusetts especially. And Everett is a very diverse city. I love the people. I love the culture. And I love the education system that this city has. And reading about Priya and listening to about Priya's comments and all the praises and worship that people are talking about her, I don't need to explain anything else because everybody else has already said it most beautifully. I'm here to support Priya for her contract to be extended. And so that our kids can have a better education moving forward. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir, for your comments. Is there anybody else? I can't see, whoever is, please, thank you, step up to the thing and just state your name for the record, please.
Good evening, members of the school committee. My name is Juan Soler Ramos. I am currently a sophomore at Everett High School. I suggest that you carefully consider your options before casting your vote today to extend the current superintendent's contract. Avoid acting impulsively and instead be impartial and unbiased. I'm not requesting this on my own behalf because regardless of the result of this vote and the significance of the choice you will make later this evening, I won't be here in another two years. I'm asking and making this request for the people who will follow me. Your choice tonight will impact, will have an impact on these people, possibly your future children or grandchildren. Will these kids develop to be well-motivated and reach for the stars? Will they go on to become a president, governor, mayor, or perhaps a doctor, surgeon, nurse, or even an attorney? I don't know what they will strive to become, but overall, all of you would generally influence who they become, what kind of people they will develop and strive to become. When they see someone suffering or lying in the mud, will they help them? Will they help them rise? You'll be the ones to change how people perceive Everett as a whole. You will leave a legacy that Everett will be remembered for, the wonderful, caring, generous, and resilient scholars they teach and send out into the world. Honestly, we all genuinely want the best for our kids and young people. Because of this, we ought to strive to realize the original version of Everett's enduring legacy. Priya Tahiliani, in my opinion, is the ideal candidate to realize this objective. She balances not just her actual family, but also her work family. She goes above and beyond by organizing activities for her students to go where they can be themselves and forget the tension from home and keep it tucked away in a drawer. The current superintendent has brought amazing changes to EPS thus far, and I have seen the positive impact that her presence and actions has had on our school and my peers. I sincerely pray that you choose wisely and support Priya. I sincerely pray that you choose wisely and support Priya in her vision for the Everett Public School District, not just for a better tomorrow, but for better years to come. Please vote to keep Priya Tahiliani to ensure a bright future for not only myself, but my peers who will follow. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comments. Is there anybody else? I can't see whoever it is. If you please come to the mic and state your name.
Hi, I'm Martha, and this is my husband, Jerry. And so, we moved here almost three years ago, and we, I am an artist, I show my work and I teach art, and we opened Art Lab Everett. And someone spoke about that, and so I just wanted to say that Priya, and Priya came to Art Lab and did some artwork, and we talked about the value of arts, and, and we talked about the value of arts and the, the health benefits, and it was a lovely interaction. And we were supposed to have an artist show their work, and they dropped out. And so, I happened to be on the phone with Talia about something different, and she recommended Natalia. And I think, you know, for a while now, we've been working on creating community at Art Lab, and the schools are what made that happen. So, I invited Natalia to show her work, and council members and teenagers, high school students, all showed up. I was like floored. It was really amazing. And I've been working with the city to make things happen for Art Lab, and honestly, I was a little nervous about speaking up today. Plus, I don't really, Jerry's here with me because I just wanted to share that it was a wonderful experience and that I've also worked in the enrichment programs, I think Heather's over there, and the kids are amazing, such creative kids. And, you know, kids that can't afford arts enrichment or arts opportunities deserve them just as much as people that can afford them. That's one of the reasons we came to Everett. So, that's all I have to say.
The superintendent has made clear that she supports the children in this city and that she wants what's best for them, whether it's arts education, or sports, or anything else. And, you know, everything that I've heard here today about her, and I've only met her a couple times, just tells me that she's the right person for the job.
Thank you both. Is there anybody else? Is there anybody else seeing none?
A second.
Oh, wait a minute.
I'm sorry, is this somebody, oh, I'm sorry. Just take a seat and just your name for the record, please.
Good evening. Good evening, school committee. My name is Abby Madome, and I just wanted to say, honestly, I don't think there should be a question whether to renew Priya's contract or not. She represents all of us. I have never experienced so much engagement from a school committee member than when I met her. She represents what we're here for. She represents diversity and change and inclusion throughout the city. The school is so diverse, and I feel like the leaders should really represent who they're leading and who they're inspiring to become the new leaders of the future. And I think that you all should choose wisely, whether you're choosing the advancement, the education that is necessary for the students, and you're choosing to represent them in a way where they feel included and appreciated and they feel cared for, because that's what Priya stands for. She cares about the people, she cares about the students, she cares about the families and everyone. And I think that is so amazing, and it would be foolish to really question whether to renew her contract. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anyone else around the corner there seeing none? Ms. Sarni, that same motion?
Make a motion to close public participation.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Sarni, seconded by Mr. La Monica, to close public comment. All those in favor? All those opposed? The ayes have it. If I could, before we go back to the regular order business, I would ask that a motion to take item number, Roman numeral eight, out of order.
Mr. Chairman, I make that motion. A second.
So, we have a motion by Ms. Cristiano, seconded by Ms. Lambert, to take Roman numeral eight, subcommittee reports, out of order. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. And, Mr. Aliani, can you just read the piece?
Yes, Roman numeral eight are subcommittee reports. We have two finance and negotiations subcommittee reports, one from Wednesday, February 22nd, 2023, and one from Monday, February 13th, 2023.
Thank you, Superintendent. I will defer to Ms. Cristiano, who is the chair of that committee, to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The committee met on those two dates to discuss the possibilities around renewing the superintendent's contract. And we, we looked at the contract itself, and, you know, we went back and forth, back and forth. And at the conclusion of the two meetings, we voted favorably out to the school committee with a 2-1 vote. I voted in favor, Mr. Mangan voted in favor, and Mr. Marcus voted against it, but to support renewing the superintendent's contract. And the, the changes were pretty basic, you know, I mean, the contract itself had, had 100 Vine Street, well, the actual address is 121 Vine Street, so we changed that. This is where the Article II, the term, we, we came to the decision to extend the contract for two years plus four months, which would extend it from March 1st, 2024, to June 30th, 2024, to finish the year at, at least, and then for two years until June 30th, 2026. And of course, the change in all the dates accordingly. Article III was the compensation, the salary increases beginning July 1st of 24, of 2.5% annually, and to change your compensation from biweekly to weekly because she's paid weekly. We're all, everybody that works, that, well, I don't work for the city anymore, but everybody that's employed by the city is, is paid weekly. So, it was very simple. The Articles, duties, and responsibilities, we, we voted to delete, including those set forth in this Everett City Charter, 84-5. That is no longer in the charter, and substituted, substituted that to read, in accordance with state law regulations and such are the duties and responsibilities of, of a superintendent as directed by this, this committee. And that's by state law. Article VIII, dismissal or suspension, I guess it reads now, good, you have to have good cause. We agreed to change that to just cause, and it's, I believe that's in every other contract. So, we're just, you know, being, keep, you know, keeping everything in line. We deleted legal fees. And lastly, all terms that we, that we, that I've discussed here and that we met and discussed must be ratified and approved by the Everett School Committee. So, that's what the recommendation from the Finance and Negotiations Committee is. And, Mr. Mangan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, just so we know, we had on, on the agenda tonight to go in the executive session. You still have the right, but that is only if you want to get into the, the nuts and bolts of, you know, what the superintendent proposed and so forth, and how we, you know, how we, how we got at this particular agreement that the committee and the superintendent agreed upon. So, certainly anyone can speak on it, but certain matters would have to go into executive session if you wanted to speak on more negotiation part of it. Like I said, we would have to go to executive session. If not, and everyone is satisfied with this, you will have the right to waive going into executive session, and you could actually talk about this, or you could just, like I said, accept it, the committee's report, place it on file. Mr. McGlaughlin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we would waive matters for executive session. Seeing the members that are on the committee, I have full faith and confidence in your abilities to be able to do the work. Madam Chairwoman Cristiano led us last year, you're leading us this year. So, for those reasons, I would make a motion that we waive numeral 10 and to refer it back to, oh, no action necessary on matters for executive session. I will put that in the form of a motion. Second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. McGlaughlin, seconded by Mr. La Monica, to waive going into executive session to discuss the, the contract of the.
Mr. Chairman, on the motion, please.
Ms. Lambert, on the motion.
If we were to seek the guidance of our council, would we need to do so within executive session?
Yes, there would be certain, certain parameters that we would have to go into executive session. But if you want, like, you can make a motion, bring the, our attorney up to speak on anything, and he could, based on any question that you had, certainly the, the, our council could answer those questions and give his, his recommendation if you would like them.
I do feel that my question may be better suited for executive session as it has to do with the consequences of our vote and any potential liability. So, I would, I would actually move favorably to go into executive session.
So, what happened is, is that we have a motion first and seconded. What I would ask then, before we do that and take your motion up, first of all, we, I would need a second anyways, and Ms. Lambert on that?
No second. No second.
Okay, we have a second by Mr., so we have two motions. What I would ask in courtesy is just to have Mr. Galvin, our council, come up to answer a question that could potentially, you know, lead us into executive session or not. I would ask at this time, Ms. McGlaughlin, if you would not be opposed to just, or if at least temporarily withdrawing your motion, that way we can hear from Mr. Galvin on the matter before we take, take a vote on that. You could always bring it back, but just, just to bring, for the purposes of bringing Mr. Galvin forward, I would ask just to withdraw it temporarily. So, Mr. McGlaughlin has agreed to withdraw his motion. I would like to have a motion to, and seconded, to bring Mr. Galvin.
So, move.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Barrows and seconded by Ms. Lambert to have Mr. Galvin up and answer questions on this particular matter. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. Galvin, you could please come up, wherever you are. If you could just, for the record, just state your name.
Good evening, everybody. Attorney Robert Galvin, counsel for the Everett School Committee.
Thank you. Ms. Lambert, the floor is yours.
Attorney Galvin, I just want to ask if you could provide the school committee with our obligations as well as potential liabilities. I don't know why this is cutting in and out. And if you would prefer to do so in executive session, I defer to your expertise.
I think the decision whether to the, whether to extend the superintendent's contract is something that you can discuss in open session. I think any advice that I would provide, I would not be comfortable providing it in open session because of the prospect of potential litigation and past litigation.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Galvin? Any other questions? Mr. Galvin, you, I'm sorry, Ms. Cristiano?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Galvin, you've reviewed the changes and the proposal, and does anything, you know, jump out at you?
The matter that you have in front of you tonight was the consensus of majority of the subcommittee. I reviewed the superintendent's original proposals, which were submitted to the subcommittee in writing. What you have in front of you tonight, all of you as members of the school committee, are what the subcommittee agreed upon. I concurred with the recommendation that was made, particularly the change from good cause to just cause. All of our teachers' contracts, paraprofessionals, administrative assistants, custodians have just cause in their contracts. The superintendent deserves no less. The other terms and conditions are very reasonable, consistent with what occurs in other communities where there are extensions being discussed. The term, whether it's two years or a longer term, is completely up to the committee. After the committee reached a majority consensus on this, I did contact Superintendent Taliani, and she reported to me that she would accept these terms as proposed, if ratified by the committee.
Thank you. I have no other questions.
Do we have any other questions, Mr. Galvin? Seeing none, Mr. Galvin, your excuse is customary, thanks. So, we have a motion on the floor and by Ms. Lambert, and seconded by Mr. Barrows, or vice versa, I apologize, who put out the first motion. This is to go into executive session, Ms. Lambert? Okay, and we have a roll call vote, Mr. O'Connor.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Barrows.
We would come back to open session after.
Yes, I apologize, yes. We would come back to open session, you know, to continue school committee meeting. So, we're reconvening back here whenever, if we do go into executive session.
And the discussion of the superintendent's contract?
Direct, would be in public.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, Mr. O'Connor, this is to go into executive session. Roll call vote, please. Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cristiano?
Yes.
Ms. Cardelo?
No.
Ms. Sarni?
No.
Mr. McGlaughlin? Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
No.
Mayor Di Maria?
No.
Chairman Mangan? Yes. I'm sorry, Mr. Marcus, did you call? I apologize, Mr. Marcus?
No.
Four yes, six no.
And I do want to rise on a point of personal privilege.
Okay, one second, one second, Ms. Lambert, I have to announce the vote for us. The motion field, four in the, in the far, it's six against it. The motion feels, Ms. Lambert, on a point of, was it information or personal privilege?
Personal privilege, and it has to do with the integrity of the committee, as well as, so it has to do with the integrity and safety of the committee as far as absconding our responsibility to seek legal counsel. I know that the, the subcommittee met, and I appreciate their work, and I have full faith in their work. However, the benefit of legal counsel is available to all of us, and as such, I do feel that the committee vote just reflected a negligence, and just want it stated for the record, that all that was being asked for was a consultation with our legal counsel. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lambert. Excuse me, we have the matter of the committee report in front of us. It was outlined by Ms. Cristiano, so what is the?
Accept the committee report and place on file.
We have a motion by Ms. Sarni, seconded by Mayor Di Maria, to accept the committee report and place it on file. All those in favor? All those opposed? The ayes have it. Ms. Sarni?
I have a point of personal privilege I'd like to speak on.
Yes.
So, a while back, I received a vicious rumor circulating that suggested I accepted employment arranged by Mayor Di Maria in exchange for agreeing to underrate the superintendent in my upcoming review of her performance. Someone even anonymously, anonymously emailed me accusing me of the same thing, and they did not sign it. Anyone that knows me, I am happily employed on a full-time job outside Everett in a field that I've worked in many years. I use my conscience as my guide in deciding policies in my vote on any matter, has never been or ever bought or sold. The rumors are false, mean-spirited and Sally pot of something that is very wrong in our community. I have finished my evaluation. I was fair, honest, and objective in every respect, just as I had pledged to do when I accepted this role and have done every day since. I have never in my life have been offered a job by I have never in my life have been offered a job by this mayor or any mayor prior. Our city has been so divided, and this needs to stop. It's sad that people are willing to destroy what we call home. We are one. We should stop this hatred and work together. The person who sent this email started a rumor, and their rumor and lies led the Boston Globe call my work. They don't realize what they do to jeopardize families' livelihood. To me, I was being bullied, harassed, to vote in a certain way. We should not be teaching our children to learn how to lie and bully people. If this ever happens again, I will file charges, have my email investigated with the police and Internal Affairs. I have never in my life seen such evil, and it's sad. I have always respected everybody's opinion, and I hope they respect mine. And again, I have never spoke to the mayor about a job or any mayor in my time I have served on the council or the school. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sarni. If I may ask, as I stated earlier, we voted not to go into executive session. We took the committee report, placed it on file. So I would like to get, if it's possible, to get a motion and seconded to, I guess, open session, item number one, take it off the table, discussion on superintendent's contract.
I will so moved and make a motion to approve favorably the terms of the-
Second.
Subcommittee report.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Cristiano and seconded by Ms. Lambert to take this out of order, and also to vote favorably on the recommendation of the committee-
On the recommended contract.
On the recommended contract from the committee.
From the committee, sorry.
From the committee. Like I said, so before we take the vote, I'm going to allow everybody to go around and speak. You don't have to if you don't want to, but just to be in fairness with everyone, I'm just going to go right around the table, just on you, one at a time, and everybody will have the chance. If not, then you certainly don't feel obligated to speak in any way if you don't feel comfortable, but if you do and you want to say it, then everybody will get a chance to speak. So I'm going to start out with Mr. Marcus.
You know, I wasn't going to say anything, but, you know, what I've gone through with people I know good, real well, you know, to try to vote a certain way, it's just, I never felt like she felt, you know, with any vote or anything I was ever taking. Whenever I took was to my heart. Whenever I went out to see people, they came first with me. It's always been that way. No one's told me what way to vote, ever. And I don't have anybody working up there at City Hall either. And I don't have anybody working in the school department. That's all I'm going to say.
Thank you, Mr. Marcus. Ms. Cristiano?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We need to put our students and families first. All great things start from that point. When we develop programs, initiatives, practices, and behaviors that benefit all residents, we know we're heading in the right direction. The Everett Public Schools is and will continue to be a guiding force on all of these fronts. The EPS is a place where leaders and educators, I believe, take great pleasure in what they do every day. If you're looking for positivity, no one needs to look any further than our district. I think it's important for Everett, as it has always been important for Everett, to promote our best and brightest. We have talented students, dedicated teachers, robust programming, and dynamic collaborations that we should take great pride in recognizing and celebrating. For me, honestly, I go by what I see, what I experience, what I feel, and what I believe is in the best interest of our students, staff, family, and this community that I love. The superintendent has been gracious with her time, consistent in providing necessary information and updates, and receptive to advice and opinions. She's, you know, unflappable. She's firm in her convictions. However, she respects that trait in others. She's been honest with me, and I know I have been honest with her. I believe together as a community, we can accomplish great things. I also have tremendous respect for the central office administration, the team that Priya Tiliani put together. Our, they're high-functioning, includes our deputy superintendent, Kim Tsai, our longstanding superintendent, Kevin Shaw, as well as our assistant superintendent, a new giant. I have seen this team at work, and I like what I see. I would like to see this work continue for many years. You know, you can tell a lot about a relationship when you have a disagreement with somebody, and I've had a few disagreements with the superintendent. I can tell everyone from my own personal perspective that you can work with this superintendent under any circumstances, no matter how difficult they are, no matter how difficult the task. You know, last year, I served as your chairperson, it was extreme honor, but I also had an opportunity to work very closely with the superintendent. So today, it's very easy. We heard that today. It's easy, it's easy, well, it is easy. Because for me, I'm more than happy to advocate and vote for an extension to this contract. You know, we all sit here, and we're going to vote or not vote to extend this contract. Just two months ago, the superintendent of schools received a proficient rating from this body, a proficient rating. And, you know, there was no, I mean, other than, with one exception, you know, and there was no real, like, negative feedback, really, from anybody. I mean, you know, again, you know, maybe some criticism, but really, for most of the proficiences, there were no comments. There were no comments to say, gee, you need to, we need to give you some more coaching, or you need to do this, or you need to do that. There was none of that proficient. Can you imagine how you'd be in your professional life? We all have them, all had them, I'm retired. And you work hard every day, and you go in for your evaluation, and you get a good evaluation. And two months later, those same people vote you out. They say, nah, you're no good, see you later. I don't see how that happens. I know what happens in the real world when that happens. I know what happens. And it's a lot of litigation that we don't want to look at. I'm not saying that, I'm just trying to be honest and open about all of this, trying to be transparent. You know, and again, we talked tonight about her receiving that great outstanding award that she received from her peers, the Mass Association of School Superintendents. You know, I attended that meeting, and there were four superintendents that received different awards. And Superintendent Tiliani was the last to receive her award. But she was the only one, and I can remember this clearly, that received a standing ovation from her peers. So four were selected for different awards, but she received a standing ovation for her work as our school superintendent. I was so proud. I thought, wow, we are so lucky. So let's extend the superintendent's contract and focus what is important, and what, that is teaching our kids and giving them the tools they need to succeed later in life. I have three children that are now grown, and they attended the Everett Public Schools, by and large, for the most part. And they were blessed to receive a quality education, and they received, you know, they got a great, great start, like a real Everett edge. And that's what she's all about. She's about that Everett edge. And I just feel like, you know, if we have some quabbles here and there, we can work those out. But I mean, you know, we have to look at, you know, what she's done, her competence, her professionalism, and let's look beyond, you know, petty grievances, or, you know, I don't like what you said she said. You know, we can solve all that, but we can't solve it when we just throw her out the door. We can't. So today, I believe the right thing to do is vote to extend this contract. The superintendent wants to invest in us, in the Everett Public Schools, and trust me, we should not even hesitate to invest in her. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cristiano. Ms. Lambert?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the opportunity to make my comments. And I wanted to start off tonight with an acknowledgement, and I think we did hear it tonight repeatedly, that change is hard. Even when change is asked for, and our community asked for it, I was at every single one of those open meetings. And prior to that, I stood behind this poll because I hid. I wanted to know what was going on with my student's school. Things were not going well, but I was terrified. I hid behind that poll from committee members, and from the superintendent, and from anybody that allowed that culture to thrive. So our community did ask for change. They were very clear in asking for somebody to come in from outside, because there was a lot of trust. There was a lot that needed to be rebuilt at that time. It's also hard for people to come into Everett sometimes, and I recall that as a child. I remember not really understanding how everybody knew when everything was going on, because so-and-so's mom knew this one, and everybody had this connection. When you come into Everett, you're coming into a community that's already tied together in so many ways. And I'm sure it was hard for the superintendent. You're coming in to these relationships that already exist, to these dynamics that are very difficult to untangle until you get your bearings. You know, I wasn't the one that said it, but I did read it earlier, is you're not Everett enough. And I remember growing up feeling that way, and when I ran for office, the joke was, I moved here when I was five, so I had only been an Everett resident for thirty-some-odd years, I still wasn't Everett enough. Change also won't be easy the next time. If we, whether we bring somebody in from outside, which I find very difficult to believe given the shortage of superintendent candidates, and they're being very selective, and for good reason, or if it's somebody from inside, they're going to have their own visions, they're going to have their own priorities, they're going to have their own culture, even if they're Everett. Failing to renew the superintendent's contract will thrust us back into a period of change. We will backslide. It will just happen, that's just a fact. It will halt progress, progress that is being made, and it will cause discontent. Superintendent Tiliani came into a community reeling from trauma, and it is still unhealed. Within two weeks of beginning her work here, a global pandemic changed everything. It would be a full year before the full staff, and we did have several people, including herself, working in person every day during the pandemic, and her administrative staff. We had our wonderful custodians, we had paraprofessionals, we had people in the building, but it was a full year before we had our full staff, and a year and a half before we had our full students back in person. One and a half years. Throughout that time and since, she's identified, analyzed, strategized, and implemented a shared vision that elevates our students, it endeavors to empower our staff, and it provides access and opportunity to every student every day. She's welcomed critical principled feedback, actual feedback, not just complaints, actual feedback with solutions. Some of her strongest relationships and most impactful changes have come from dissent, because it's easy to find people to agree with you. That's power. Superintendent Tiliani has sought out perspectives that have challenged her own. That's leadership, that's progress, and that's the genesis of possibility. I've been witness to students who do not hesitate to share their own experience and advocate for what they need to be successful whenever they've met Superintendent Tiliani, and that's been at events where students are serving their catering, and they'll take the opportunity to say, I had an idea, or we need this. I saw it yesterday, a student said, oh, can I talk to you? You know, and that's something that was unimaginable a few years ago, it's simply unimaginable. And if they did, oftentimes, there would be a conversation, and don't doubt that that happened, anybody that knows, my daughter knows that it happened, where they got pulled aside and said, you know, you have to respect authority. And yes, you do have to respect authority, and these young people do respect authority, but that's not what that was. She has the plans in place. She'll take time to explain that they're in place while also acknowledging they don't have time to wait. Our juniors, our seniors, they don't have the luxury of next year's budget, or we're putting in this staff in place, or this plan. So she goes back, and she works with her team, and then she follows up with these young people. I've heard time and again about the relationships these young people have had with Superintendent Tiliani, and I'm around these young people, I'm in the community, I have students in the school, I hear from them all the time, these authentic, just, they see their future, they're building their future with the help and support, not just of Superintendent Tiliani, but the staff that she's empowered in our buildings. This culture's changing. It's taking time, but it is changing. And have no doubt, we are seeing hero origin stories happening right now. These are our leaders of tomorrow. They will talk about this night, they will talk about some of their conversations that they've had, they will talk about what inspired them to activism, or what inspired them to education, or what made them decide to go to law school. We're seeing it now, and who do we want to be in that story? We get to decide tonight. I'll wrap it up, but superintendents have difficult jobs, and you'd be hard-pressed to name a profession where you're required to be highly educated, highly experienced, in a very specific field, and yet report to, and are publicly evaluated by a group of individuals who often have no and are not required to have any background in that professional experience. There's a shortage of qualified superintendents, and turnover in the field is the highest it's been in, I left a year off that history, but it's a long time. We are fortunate to have a qualified, award-winning leader who wants to stay, who wants to continue to build leadership from within, and who is inspiring our next generation of educators. I can go into the multiple successes of her administration from curriculum, which will result in MCAS gains, but you have to start somewhere. I've had conversations about Amplify and our new reading list, and you'll see the gains, that's coming. But you need to give the foundation, and coming out of the pandemic, that just, it will take- And coming out of the pandemic, that just, it will take time. Or stop, depending on what we do tonight. We could talk about the hiring processes and the hiring panels, and how many times I've met a new teacher and then talked to somebody who said, I was in their interview. Because we hire different. It's not about who you know, it's about your qualifications. We could talk about reengagement, something, now, remember, thirty years, I was a student of the past administration, and I was a throwaway kid. And that's a fact. That didn't stop. So sometimes, our numbers were kept very good because we got rid of the kids we didn't want. That's a fact. Those numbers don't lie, and I'm happy to share them with anybody. It's data, it's there. We could talk about enrichment, we could talk about inclusion, we can talk about representation. But I said most of what I needed to say in the public evaluation, as did we all when we rated our proficient in December of 2022 for the second time. So change is hard, and it takes time to see results. We've just begun to reap the rewards of Superintendent Tahiliani's leadership and the leadership of her staff. A vote to renew her contract is a vote to continue the progress that's begun, to give our students every opportunity they deserve. And I hope my colleagues tonight will join me in continuing the work. Let's be the heroes in their origin story and move forward together as we continue to heal as a community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lambert. Ms. Avalo?
A politician, a pastor, an author, educators, moms, dads, students, Black, White, Latino, old and young, they've come today to voice their opinions, and an overwhelming majority have taken the time out of their busy lives to come say they support our superintendent. Some of my favorite words used were efficient, amazing, fair, prepared, genuine care, outstanding, ideal candidate, above and beyond, and my favorite, superstar. If students weren't happy, you'd know it, just as we walked out last year. But in this case, we are happy. Students came to the school committee meeting and voiced their opinion. The students have spoken. Am I saying that everything is perfect? Of course not. There are a number of issues that need to be addressed, but all good things take time. We need to give our superintendent the time to create the vision she has for our schools. Do you think throwing in a new superintendent is going to fix issues that are going around all over the country? MCAS scores are down because of the pandemic, which not only affects Everett, but affects the nation. Teachers are leaving the profession left and right everywhere, not just here. Maybe it's time that we focus on things that we can actually fix in this moment, like overcrowded classrooms and a lack of funding. You are here to serve the students, not a political agenda. As a student representative, a vote against the superintendent is a vote against me, is a vote against my peers in the audience, and is a vote against all students of Everett. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Avalo. Mira Di Maria? Mr. La Monica?
I have no comment either.
Ms. Cardello?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First thing I want to do is explain that I was asked to step down from being on the Subcommittee on Contract Negotiations and Finance because people thought I couldn't be impartial under some circumstances that have transpired. And I did seek legal counsel because I wanted to make sure I was within my rights to vote, at least tonight, since they didn't feel comfortable with me being on the committee. And I have a couple of statements, and I really don't want to take up too much time because it is getting late, but I think this is important. First of all, in my capacity as a state, county, or municipal employee, I am expected to take certain actions in the performance of my duty. Under the circumstances, a reasonable person could conclude that a person or organization could unduly enjoy my favor or improperly influence me when I perform my official duties, or that I am likely to act or fail to act as a result of kinship, rank position, or undue influence of a party or a person. I am filing this disclosure to say the facts about this relationship or affiliation and to dispel any appearance of conflict of interest. As a voting member of the school committee, I am within my rights to vote this evening. In January 22, superintendent filed charges discrimination with the Mass Commission Against Discrimination, named respondents on the school committee, including myself. And then on July 20 of 22, Tahiliani requested to withdraw her MCAD complaint because she wished to file a civil action in court instead. As of date of this disclosure, to my knowledge, Ms. Tahiliani has not filed a civil action in court. I am not aware of any of the claims filed against the above-named committee or in visuals by the superintendent. I am only one vote. I don't win or lose, she doesn't want to lose because of my vote. I am one vote, and I have to vote the way I see fit and the way, not because somebody has told me, or promised me a job, more lies out there on these silly reporter things or whatever. But anyway, I just want to read this because I just actually wrote it as I was listening to people. If I were to vote on personal feelings, I would vote one way. I happen to like and respect the superintendent very much. I see the good that she has done. I've commented on the good that she has done. But it's not all about me. Like, people just seem to think everything is focused on them. If I were to vote based on intimidation, I would vote one way also. And you probably wouldn't like it, but I'm sick of the bullying and the intimidation and all these emails and stuff. That mean absolutely nothing. I'm sick of people that never had a kid in the system, don't own property, are here just because they are. And they stand and they speak, and they go on and on, and it's like, we have important matters to discuss and take care of. We're talking about the students. I don't think people are always thinking about the students as they profess they are. I realize that I was elected for the people and by the people of the city of Everett. I didn't elect myself, nor as I appointed. I was voted in, and I am voted to be their voice, not based on intimidation, not based on optics, not based on what they think is going on, or the way they want it to be, on facts. I've spent a lot of years in city government. They haven't all been easy. All the votes aren't easy. You're not going to please all the people all the time, but you want to please the majority of people all the time. That's what you strive to do. And in our district, it is about the students, but it's also about the teachers. The teachers are responsible for our students on a daily basis. Some of our students spend more time with their teachers than they do their families or guardians. So we have to think about our teachers. And when I hear from teachers, and when teachers are upset, and then they're told they can't talk to me, that's upsetting to me because it's never been that way. Anyway, I get enough word, I get enough fact. Having heard both sides, I have to base my vote on facts, not optics, not opinions. Teachers are happy in the classroom. They teach our children better. Our kids are more comfortable because the teachers are comfortable. We have a lot of social, emotional problems. We need our teachers to be on top of the game in order for our students to be on top of our game. So my vote tonight is going to be totally based on what I know, what I feel in my heart is the right thing to do, not because anyone has promised me anything, threatened me with anything. I am who I am, and those of you who have known me for a long time or even a short time, know that's the person I am, and I will stick by my conviction all day long. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Cardello. Mr. Barrows?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We've heard a lot tonight. I was part of the hiring committee to hire the new superintendent about three years ago. I had the opportunity to go through the whole process, and along with other colleagues, I had the opportunity to go to two districts to visit in person, the district, to talk to employees, to students, to teachers about those finalists. One of them was Ms. Tahiliani. I went with another colleague to Boston because she was one of the four finalists that the whole committee had chosen, and the school committee was going to interview. I heard many things there. I visited the bowling building, where we met with administrators, with community members, but I also went to school to talk to teachers, to students, and to principals. Everything that I heard there, I've seen it here. And I am proud of that vote that night to choose her as our superintendent because these past three years, what I've heard from students and principals and educators and community members in Boston about her, I've seen it, her putting action in Everett. We heard a lot tonight about the stability and the leadership that she has brought to the district. There is one voice that didn't speak tonight, and I would like to speak on behalf of them, is our parents with kids in our special needs education. We've received emails and calls from them. Perhaps you have. I have. And I would like to read a quick paragraph of what those parents shared with me regarding their feelings towards this superintendent. We would like to share our input after speaking with many special needs families in our communities, in our community. We want to express our gratitude to Superintendent Tahiliani and all the changes and benefits she brought for all of our children. We would like for you to all take into consideration all of this when you vote on her contract. She has changed our lives. She has changed the lives of many minorities in our community. We have finally had an approachable superintendent who visits the premises to listen to the needs of students and their families. She has implemented programs and changed to better serve our community. It would be a huge loss for the community of Everett to lose someone with her professional qualifications and soul compassionate. My children with special needs are better today because we have her, end in quote. That's who we are talking about. That's who we are discussing about tonight in order to renew or not to renew her contract. The parents who wrote this go through several struggles in their lives, but they took the time because they, for the first time, as some of them shared with me, they feel that they are seen in the district by this superintendent. So tonight, I don't want to speak about my feelings towards her. And being the only minority in the school committee, someone who in the past has heard that I am in favor of the superintendent because she might be my cousin, because we are both brown and came from parents who are immigrants to this country, this is not a joke, this is true. Might be offensive. It is. But tonight, I don't want to speak for myself. I want to speak on behalf of these parents. I want to speak on behalf of the students, over 7,000 students in the Everett Public Schools, who have reached out to us by email, some of those who have called me, and others who spoke here tonight, including our own student representative. I don't know how, after listening to all of this, especially from our students and parents, we would say no to this superintendent and have her getting out of here. So I ask you, not on your behalf, not on behalf of X or Y, but on behalf of those that we truly represent. Many of them did not vote for me or for you all, but they are the ones that we serve. We are their voice. And I hope you can keep that in mind when you cast your vote tonight. She earned it to continue to be a superintendent, and I ask you to do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barrows. Ms. Soni?
Thank you. I'll be basing on my evaluation, basing on, one was the safety of the school and also the cleaning and cleanliness of the school. Also, the voices of people that were afraid to speak out for retaliation. There were a lot of families that bumped into me in the stores or somewhere but refused to give their names because they felt retaliation if they came up and spoke. So I'm going to speak on their behalf on my vote. Ms. Cardello mentioned a few things, which I agree with her, the same thing. And Mr. Marcus also mentioned not having anyone, and I also don't have any gain or loss with employment or anybody in the school or the city. So my vote will be based on the people that voted me in. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Soni. Mr. McLaughlin? And before I speak, I would give the opportunity to Ms. Tahiliani to speak.
So thank you so much to everyone for being here tonight. My desire to continue serving as the superintendent of the Everett Public Schools is as strong as ever. I am energized by our work and our team. The pride I feel for what we have accomplished is exceeded only by the optimism I have for the future. And I cannot speak with any more certainty when it comes to my dedication to the Everett Public Schools. I want to thank the students, staff, family, and community members who have reached out on my behalf, who reached out via email, via phone call, and who came here tonight. And I want you to know that I am more motivated than ever to work tirelessly on your behalf. When I think about our district, I see endless opportunity, not an ending. And to the committee, I believe that an extension will allow us to continue the work we've started to meet our immediate and long-term goals. I am committed to improving our relationships, accepting and adapting to the feedback you provide me, and working in your partnership. I promise to grow as a leader with your support and guidance. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. I just, you know, I want to echo some comments. And, you know, everyone knows, last year, when I came on with some of my colleagues last year, you know, I had a certain mindset. But I always said, I'm going to keep an open mind, which I did. There were certain things, little but a little, that I thought that was in the benefit of the district, that I thought. And I was still very guarded because there were still some times where things come up and I questioned the superintendent's motives and so forth. But, you know, I think deep down, like I said, Everett is a unique place. It's tough. We have an edge to it. And, you know, it's very, very difficult to commit and get acclimated, especially when you're not from Everett. So I can understand anybody putting their guard up, maybe having a certain defense mechanism. But I think over time, you know, the fifteen months I've been here, I think the superintendent has at least shown me that she's willing to, you know, she makes mistakes, whatever. I think she's willing to admit that she's made mistakes. And ever since, you know, I became the chairman a few months ago, we've had many conversations, you know. And privately, she's admitted, you know what, she's not perfect, and this is still a work in progress. But I think she's totally committed to the district. But I think she's totally committed to the district, and I believe that. And I just, you know, I want to go through some things, and, you know, we mentioned last year, one of the big things was, you know, and people come up and spoke about it, was cleanliness. And I think we've had a major improvement, you know, in where we were and so forth a couple of years ago. Security, I mean, I can't, I mean, we all knew what it was up here when we had parents up here last year, you know, and I understand all the different things that went on with, you know, lockdowns and everything else. I think by, you know, who she hired for, you know, the head of security and, you know, and the measures, and you're going to see some of the stuff going on here tonight, a vast improvement over the last year. Okay? The evaluation, the last couple of years, two years now, two years in a row, proficient evaluation. Another thing in which, and I was fortunate enough to go, again, and I wish, you know, maybe more people could have went, but I went down in Nashville back in November, and, you know, for the CTE and the academies development and stuff, and to strengthen and improve our district, okay? I met, and she was here a few months ago and presented us, Ms. Christine Sanchez-Sarano, who didn't know anybody, came out of nowhere, was hired from, I think, like she was down in Charlotte, something in the Charlotte area, North Carolina, and amazing steps that are being taken, only now, little steps, whatever, but hopefully down the road when, you know, and when, hopefully it's, imagine a new high school with CTE and so forth, and I know that's something that, you know, the mayor and I and most of you are all passionate about. But bringing someone like her who had no connection to anybody, I thought was amazing. And here's a lady right away that was, I mean, I think she's fantastic, and I think these are the types of people that Mr. Tarielani, you know, hired, whatever, and, you know, so I look at that. And then also, you know, you know, I've heard from people on both sides, as some of you have, you know, I got the, you know, tons of emails over the last week, whatever, and actually, they were all in support of the superintendent, but, you know, some people have called me and offered their displeasure, and I certainly respect, you know, whatever, and I think they had, some people had some very good points. But when I look at the overall body of work and everything else, like I said, I have to be, that's what I have to really measure on. And I'm going to mention one person, you know, and, because she sent it out, you know, to all of us, who I ultimately respect and have the utmost respect, and has been a tired advocate for so many different causes in this city, and she made it public when she sent it to all of us, is Patty Scully's. I love Patty daily, like I said. This is the first time I've ever heard from her, you know, on a matter related, you know, something like this. And even Patty admits at the beginning, I believe, in the email that, you know, she was skeptical. She was very skeptical of certain things, of the superintendent and how things were and so forth. But I think I'm in the same arena as hers, is that I think over time, you know, she's seen things through her own eyes and talking to people, and that has changed her mind. And I feel the same exact way. And she really, I believe in the email that I see, I think it was today, kind of hit the nail on the head. So, I mean, everyone's entitled to vote their own way, but one thing I will say is, and I defend my members whether I agree or disagree, some of the stuff, whether you support the superintendent or not, some of the stuff was uncalled for on Facebook. Okay? The rumors that have started, things, I mean, Ms. Sarni, I didn't know about your situation, but I specifically saw the one on Ms. Cardello, whatever. And whether Ms. Cardello votes with me or against me tonight, however she votes, that's her personal opinion. But to sit there and throw out rumors and things like that when it's not true is, to me, is no good. Okay? We can agree to disagree. We're all here, we all got elected by the people. Now, I certainly support the superintendent 100%. Like I said, and I've been like that for a long time now, because I believe she is the best person to lead us in the future going forward, based on what I've seen and so forth, and what I continue to see. Okay? And that's it. It's nothing else. It's not politics with me, it's not anything else. And at the end of the day, whether I'm here or not, I just have to vote on what I see with my eyes and what I hear. And talking to parents, you know, talking to students, are there some teachers that are disgruntled? Then absolutely, and I'm not saying it's justified or not. I can't say it, because I'm not in their classrooms every day seeing what's going on. But based on what I see, the things that we've asked for over the past year between the cleanliness, the security, the evaluation we've given her, the CTE development, like I said, to me, I just think the right thing to do is to vote in favor of the superintendent. And that's the way I'll be voting tonight. So, thank you. Any further discussion? Ms. Lambert?
I just want to clarify a point, because I did receive a communication that was, I believe, misinterpreted, that we are not allowed to talk to teachers. And I do just want to clarify, there was a piece called managerial rights, that all it does was put in writing what the law and what reflects the operational duties of the superintendent versus the school committee. That was done to protect the members as much as it was to us, because if an item that could become a grievance is brought to us outside of that, that nullifies part of the process. Not nullifies, that's the wrong word to use. So I think that was misinterpreted, because I've heard from as many teachers as I have, and our teachers are represented, you all know I love our teachers, I hold our teachers dear, they are represented. And the silence, to me, says there is a split. Right? Otherwise, there would be union representation one way or the other, you know, so read from that what you will. But I've met as many teachers that have pulled me aside, that have said, keep doing what you're doing, keep fighting, you know, things are moving, there are things that need to be improved on, because it takes time. But there's a definite difference. But I do just want to clarify, it doesn't mean you can't reach out to us. It doesn't mean we can't respond. It doesn't mean a parent or a constituent can't reach out to us. All it is saying is that the duties of the superintendent are the hiring, the discipline, those logistic, day-to-day HR duties as they should be. We should not be interfering with them. We should not be calling for a friend to, you know, that may want a job. We shouldn't be calling because somebody got written up. That is not our responsibility. So I just want to clarify that for the record, because I do think there was some confusion, and that may have led to some of the discontent, when they thought they could not reach out to us about other issues. So thank you for the allowance.
Thank you, Ms. Lambert. Seeing nobody else, what is the matters before you?
Belita.
So...
I was favorable action for them.
Correct. And second, so with that, I would ask the clerk to do a roll call vote. And yes would be to extend the contract that was recommended by the negotiating committee, and no vote would be to not recommend the extension contract that was voted by the negotiating committee. Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cristiano?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
No.
Ms. Sarni?
No.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Ms. Marcus?
No.
Mr. LaMonica?
No.
Mayor Di Maria?
No.
No.
Chairman Mangan? Four yes, six no. Four yes, six no. The matter has failed. Madam Superintendent, please read the next item, please, on the agenda. Back in regular business.
Thank you. Roman numeral six is the report of the superintendent, and we'll start with the superintendent's update. I know you're happy to know that you still have a year of these left. All right. So to begin, I would like to thank everyone who participated in our Read Across America Day events on Thursday, March 2nd. As usual, we had a wide variety of people who volunteered their time to read to students. That included elected officials, New England Patriot David Andrews, EHS students, administrators, and relatives of EPS staff. Thanks to our school leaders, teachers, and educators for creating a decorative, welcoming, and inclusive environment for our guests, I was especially impressed by the selection of books that were curated for the day. It was a very exciting and sentimental day for me in particular, as it was exactly three years ago to the day that I began my tenure in the Everett Public Schools, reading to students for Read Across America Day on March 2nd, 2020.
Madam Superintendent, I apologize for interruption. Folks, I'm not against you speaking, if you could just move out a little bit, so, no, I don't want to do that. So the superintendent, can you please, or else we're going to have to take a recess, and I just want to try to continue the meeting, just please. I have not, not in speaking, but just take it a little bit farther in the library so the members and the people at home can hear the superintendent speak. Madam Superintendent.
So on that day and every day since, I felt fortunate to be a part of this community, and I thank you all for this opportunity and for allowing me to serve as your superintendent. So jumping into our update, at our last meeting, we presented our assessment data and the hard work being done every day in our classrooms. I refer to our iReady interim assessments and how our teachers use the results of these assessments to determine intervention strategies for our students. And so I wanted to share with you this example of the extensive data that Whittier teachers and administrators use to tailor plans for students. As you can see, there's a breakdown of MCAS data and iReady scores, as well as draft plans and strategies. I really like these photos because they show you the seriousness and professionalism that our educators put into this work. It also underscores the fact that while MCAS scores are released once a year, our efforts on this front are never-ending. In addition to the work that our educators do to analyze and implement data in their everyday practice, they also spend a great deal of time and effort recognizing and celebrating the progress our students are making each and every day. For example, the Whittier School has an iReady All-Star Program, which highlights students who display tremendous academic growth. I had the pleasure of being at the Whittier the day the students were recognized with Whittier t-shirts, and it was my honor to help mark the occasion. Similarly, last month, the Madeleine English School recognized students for their outstanding performance on the mid-year iReady diagnostic assessment. This year's motto with the Maddie is "Your only competition is yourself," which I think has been a fantastic way to approach the 2022-2023 school year, as it motivates students to meet and exceed their own expectations and potential. Many EPS students take those words to heart, as it is not unheard of for a student to progress multiple grade levels in one academic calendar year. Another intervention strategy that we've been utilizing is in the form of our Acceleration Academies, where we leverage our school vacations to better support our students. Thanks to our continued use of DESI grant funding, we hired 72 teachers to provide high-intensity, small-group instruction in math or ELA for close to 465 students in grades 3 through 12 over the February vacation break. Students were invited to participate based on iReady and assessment data, and they received five hours of core content area instruction per day. In addition, for the first time, we supplemented the Acceleration Academies with enrichment opportunities. Community partnerships included LEGO Engineering with Day Lab, Haitian Folkloric Dance, Sculpture and Collage with Art Lab, Parkour with Parkour Generations Boston, and Music Instruction with the Immigrant Family Resources Institute. Additionally, Everett High School 9th and 10th Grade students prepared for MCAS testing through relevant project-based learning experiences that included college career planning, personal finance, and a focus on overall wellness. Thanks to everyone who contributed to the Acceleration Academy experience, including our manager of extended learning, Heather McCormick. This year, Ms. McCormick asked that educators survey students at the end of the week. Students were asked a series of short questions ranking their experience on a scale of 1 to 5, with 1 being the best. When asked to rate how much they enjoyed their math or ELA class, 94% rated their experience a 4 or a 5. And 92% of students gave their enrichment class a score of 4 or 5. 72% of respondents said they would attend the April Academy if given the opportunity. In the response section, one student wrote, "I learned how to write a narrative and how to present a good argument." Thanks to teachers for giving us amazing feedback as well, here's one you might find interesting and encouraging. One teacher remarked, "The children were so engaged and excited to come each day. They especially loved the special guests. We did a social emotional unit that they also loved." Another teacher said, "I was a little nervous to work with 6th grade students since I teach 1st grade. However, I loved it. My highlight was definitely getting to create a personal budget with them and teach them about financial literacy. They were so interested and engaged in this topic. I always wished that someone taught me about this stuff, so it was really enjoyable to do that for them. We worked with decimals and practiced multiplication and division through the process." A huge congratulations to the EHS Theater Company, who participated in the Massachusetts Educational Theater Guild Festival this past weekend and earned a win in the first round of the competition. Riley already went through a summary of this, so they are heading to the next round of the competition, and we will definitely give you an update on how they do, but just a congratulations from me as well to these students and to their teachers. Also, Riley already gave us a highlight of EHS's hosted Its Everett Got Talent Showcase on Thursday, February 16th, in the Center for Performing Arts. So again, this is an event that we look forward to having every year. Also, Riley went over our, congratulations to our 1080 STEM Challenge. So congratulations goes to our EHS STEM Club for finishing in 3rd place at the overall 1080 Mass Open Invitational. And just so that you are aware, in the process, our team did secure a place in the 1080 National Invitational, set for April 28th and 29th in Miami Springs, Florida. And I thank you to Dr. Siders for working with the students to get them to this point of success, and for advocating to make their Miami trip a reality, and you will see that later on on the agenda. Congratulations also to the Madeleine English School Science Club. The students, under the direction of teacher and advisor Bruce Jaffe, were named the winner of the 2023 MACC Youth Environmental Service Award. The club was recognized for its work in the River Green Park and Malden River Wetland and Habitat Enhancements Project. The first step in the River Green Park Restoration Project was cleanup, which required working hard to peel back the generations of neglect and dumping that has compromised the river and wetlands. After that, habitat features like bird bat and bee boxes, snags, thickets, and sandbanks were added to the area. Later this year, MACC is planning to join Maddie students to plant trees, remove invasive species, and provide labor for another environmental project coordinated by Mr. Jaffe's Tireless Club. We look forward to EPS students continuing to take part in the city's effort to restore River Green Park to its lush and lively origins. Our Culinary Arts Department continues to churn out great dishes. Earlier this month, our students participated in the National Guard MRE Challenge. This fun and creative competition asked students to prepare a meal fit for an active military soldier. Sergeant First Class Jamie Chambers represented the National Guard and talked to our students about the origin and evolution of MREs, which stands for Meals Ready to Eat. For the challenge, teams of two or three students were given an MRE meal and tasked with transforming it into a five-star dish. The event was a massive success, and the Culinary Arts Department plans on making it a permanent part of the academic year, thanks to Culinary Arts Director Carolyn Parmenter and our team for securing opportunities like this for our students. Congratulations to Everett High School's Debated and Espanol Team, which finished 2nd at the Boston Debate League City Championship Qualifiers, which qualified them for a spot in the finals, which will be held on March 10th at the Museum of Science. The team has flourished under the direction of Ruth Cardona Suarez and Anastasia Colaquitas, as evidenced by the many accolades and awards earned by the students. Marcella de Souza was named Best Speaker. In addition, Marcella won the Andrew Broca Senior Speaker Award and a $1,000 scholarship from the Boston Debate League. Yaelin Mendoza-Eskival finished in 2nd place overall, and Erica Portillo and Gabriel Ponce both placed within the top 10. Congratulations to these students and to all of our debaters. Lastly, for those of you who are curious, the debaters were asked to consider the following topic. "The United States federal government should substantially increase its security cooperation with the North Atlantic Treaty Organization in one or more of the following areas: artificial intelligence, biotechnology, and cybersecurity." And they did that in Spanish, so I don't think I could do that in English. Last Thursday, the district held its first-ever family by literacy celebration for all EPS students and families in pre-pay through 5th grade. The event was a huge success, and the list of thank yous is a long one, as several departments and a lot of individuals contributed to the effort. Having attended, I can say that this is something that I hope we do do on an annual basis. The Department of English Learners organized the celebration to coincide with Read Across America Day. The festivities were held at the Kavarian School, and our student ambassadors were on hand to welcome families and read to students in multiple language. on hand to welcome families and read to students in multiple languages. The young students had fun decorating bookmarks, making paperbag puppets, and creating journals. Attendees received a free book and had the chance to listen to stories in English, Spanish, Portuguese, Arabic, Haitian Creole, Nepalese, and Vietnamese. One of the Portuguese readers was none other than Kavarian School Assistant Principal Keith Spencer. If that wasn't enough, the EHS Culinary Arts Department contributed to the effort by making many multicultural foods. Their delicious creations included Haitian meatballs, banh mi, dumplings, enchiladas, and churros. Director of English Learners Brittany Baggett shared one of her favorite moments of the night happened in the room where the Nepali text was being read. The plan was to have the high school student ambassadors read the text, so they had been given the text ahead of time, and when the students saw that the protagonist of the story was a red fox, they actually brought in a stuffed fox for the students to have while they read. And while the plan, again, was for the students, student ambassadors, to read the book, one of our youngest students, I think kindergarten or 1st grade, came in and blew them all away when she read every word of the book in Nepali. As we have discussed in the past, EPS is continually looking for ways to support its dedicated and talented paraprofessionals. The latest development on this front is the creation of a brochure for our pairs that outlines the different opportunities that we offer. This includes partnerships we have with Bunker Hill Community College and Endicott College. Our pairs can earn a 2-year Associate's Degree in Education from BHCC or a BA in Education from Endicott by completing these programs. Classes will begin in the summer in-person at Everett High, although the plan is to poll participants to determine if a hybrid model would work more effectively. Paraprofessionals can pursue degrees at great savings, thanks to the Massachusetts Paraprofessional Teacher Preparation Grant Program. This offer offers savings per credit up to as much as $7,500 annually. Thanks to Director of Remote Learning and Instruction Ann Auger and her intern Gianna Martin for their hard work on this initiative, like the state, we recognize that one of the best ways to address the teacher shortage is to support our paraprofessionals, who are already critical members of our team. And finally, I want to share three quick updates from our friends at Everett Little League, Everett Girl Soccer, and Everett Pop Warner. Little League registration ends on March 17th. Families can do so by visiting everettlittleleague.com. The site has all the necessary information, including a helpful age chart, to help you determine what league you should sign up for. The Everett Girl Softball League is hosting a Free Skills Clinic this Saturday, March 11th, at Pope John. The kindergarten-to-grade 2 session will be held from 3:00 to 4:00 p.m., while the 3rd through 7th grade session will be held from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. In addition, the Girl Softball League is registering players for the spring season. Families can sign up at everettsoftball.com. Finally, the Everett Pop Warner Football and Cheerleading Program will hold an in-person registration event on March 26th from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the Village Bar and Grill. The registration fee will be reduced during this special one-time event. Football is open to players from ages 5 to 14, while cheerleading is open to youngsters ages 4 to 15. And that concludes our update for this evening.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Any questions? Seeing none, recommendation?
Make a motion to place on file.
We have a motion by Ms. Lambert, 2nd, and by Mr. McLaughlin to pace this superintendent's report on file. All those in favor? All those opposed? The ayes have it. Madam Superintendent, please read the next item.
So, item number 2 is a security update. We are fortunate to have EPS Director of Security Lorna O'Connor here with us tonight, and she has prepared a detailed update for you, one I'm sure you'll find supports the investment that this body has made in safety and security measures and protocols. Like nearly everything we do, there is no end date or finish line to this work, and as you will hear from Ms. O'Connor, there is still a lot to be done and things to consider as we make sure that this remains one of our top priorities. From my perspective, I can say that we are in a far better place today than we were a year ago, and this is to everyone's credit, from students to staff to district leadership. And with that, I will respectfully ask that you invite Ms. O'Connor to step forward.
We have a motion by Mr. McLaughlin, 2nd, and by Mayor D. Maria to bring Head of Security Ms. O'Connor forward. All those in favor? All those opposed? The ayes have it. Ms. O'Connor, thank you for joining us, and just state your name for the record.
Thank you for having me. Good evening, Lorna O'Connor. Tough day to go on, I guess, right? So, I just wanted to give a couple of security updates. We've done a lot in the past several months. We did a lot, what's been done, what we're currently doing, and what we plan to explore for the future. So, if you could put the slide on for what has been done. Sorry. Perfect. Thank you. So, not in any particular order, but we'll start with, we hired security guards for Everett High. So, we have 3 at all times from 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. while school's in session, and 1 is for the front door, 1 for the rear door, and 1 in a command center that watches the cameras the whole time. They're looking, the exterior cameras, they're looking inside at the restrooms, the stairwells, they're constantly on the radio with the deans, with the success coaches, with security, giving feedback to where students, if they see a bunch of students in one restroom, they go out and clear that, look for passes, look for IDs, no hats, no hoodies. So, that's been very successful. The front desk security guard also assists with signing in students who arrive late by scanning their student ID. So, we installed a scanner to quickly check in tardy students at EHS. It goes directly into the school management system, and this helps put them in at a quicker rate, and the teachers have immediate access to attendance information. We also updated all K-8 exterior cameras in the district. When I first came in, some of the schools, I couldn't even see anything. So, one of my first things that I did was, did all the exterior cameras, so now we can actually see anything that's happening. We also hired additional 2 attendance offices to assist with residency checks, bringing the total number of attendance offices to 3. That's been very helpful. I've created a spreadsheet that they log into to kind of keep track a little bit of, you know, how many checks they're doing and what the result was. And then, some changes implemented more recently, I installed panic alarm buttons at the main office reception desk at all schools in the district. So, there's silent alarms that can be triggered if they're not comfortable using a phone or radio, if someone's in front of them. It goes directly to Everett Police, and they respond to the location of that panic alarm. I also get a call just to let me know, so I can respond as well. We created an emergency reference sheet for our staff at all schools. This sheet consists of 1 page. It pretty much breaks down what we do. So, instead of a teacher, if we're having an emergency, looking for their binder and trying to figure out what they're supposed to do, I did a quick cheat sheet of lockdown, evacuate, and counter. And then, each side has bulleted on what the students are doing and what the staff should be doing at this time. So, I advise them all to hang that up in the classroom near their door. It's very helpful. I have it in my office as well. We installed new burglar alarm panels at all the schools in the district. So, these new alarms have remote app capabilities, so I can add and delete users more easily. So, I have more, I can manage the system better on who has access to the buildings. I have remote access to armed and disarmed buildings as needed. We also installed additional card readers at various K-8 school locations throughout the district to combat door propping. So, I found that, especially during recess time, a lot of schools were kind of keeping the doors propped open because they didn't want to walk all the way around. To alleviate that, we added some card readers, and the teachers have access at certain times during recess. Installed a card reader in each of the elevators at EHS to combat students using elevators throughout the school day that do not have prior authorization from the nurse. So, that was designed, and of course, some of the kids hop in, and if it's lit up, they go, but we try to use that to alleviate any issues of overcrowding in the elevators at EHS. I also created laminated shelter-in-place signs for all the schools in the district, which I deployed at entrance doors by school staff in the event of shelter-in-place. There's 2 different signs, there's an English and Spanish sign, and then there's an English and Portuguese, so they can put those up. It also has the pictogram symbol set forth by FEMA, the Federal Emergency Management Agency. So, that shows what the shelter-in-place looks like. So, when they put that up, people know, do not come in, we're sheltering. Currently, what we are doing, we are updating district-wide PA systems, clocks, and telephones. This project is extensive. We'll address communication during emergency events to be displayed on digital clocks and signage. The PA system addition is to ensure all classrooms and office areas can hear the messages, as well as the schools having the ability to dial directly to 911 without having to dial 9 first. So, that was a thing that they kept getting hung up on, and it's a state law now, and a federal law, that you have to dial out 911. And actually, can I excuse myself to get my water? I'm sorry. Hold on a second. Thank you. We also purchased a visitor management system to redeployed at the main entrance at EHS. It has the ability to scan licenses and passports and directly input this visitor information, and it'll actually print the motor sticker badge. So, instead of taking their word for it and having them write their name into a log, where if I had to search for records from, say, 6 months ago, I'd have to go digging. This system has the ability to add notes to specific visitor profiles, so if you, say, want to write a note, immediately contact the SRO upon arrival, whatever note you'd like to put in, it makes it easier to do that, and also to pull visitor history. Currently installing interior cameras at all K-8 schools in the district. Currently, 5 of the larger schools have been completed to date, so within the next few weeks, we should have that in all the schools. I connected with Navigate 360 to plan for future Alice trainings for additional staff to be certified as Alice trainers. I also am creating a section on the EPS website for safety and security, where parents and students can stay up to date with security protocols, technology, and any relevant updates. So, I'm working with Dave O'Connor on that as well. I am working in conjunction with the SROs to simulate an emergency situation with EHS staff, so once that is completed, we'll be working on conducting emergency evacuation drills in all schools, beginning with the high school. The plan is to run the exercises after school in a principal meeting, and then break up into groups and pretend an active shootout. We will also be exploring recommendations based on a threat assessment that was conducted at EHS. Several months ago, I did a threat assessment with Sauna Troll, New England. Overall, they recommended, based on the amount of weapons found at EHS during this current school year, that we look into deploying a weapons detection system at the main entrance of the high school. Keep in mind that we're doing a much better job of tracking these weapon incidents in our system, as opposed to previous years, which may have skewed the number. We also have equipped all schools with a visitor sticker book, which allows a school receptionist to fill out and have the visitor wear the sticker on that outermost garment. This indicates that the visitor has been vetted through our process and is supposed to be in our buildings. In the past, we have worked with EPD on conducting randomized canine sweeps of EHS, and our plan is to continue moving forward with randomized canine sweeps of EHS. We have not done one yet this year, but the plan is to be doing one shortly. And throughout the school year, we have identified numerous hotspots at EHS where camera access is limited, and we continue to identify these areas and add cameras to optimize camera coverage at EHS. So, I will move on now to what we are continuing to explore, so window coverings for all classroom and office areas at the schools. So, I am exploring that. These shades will prevent attacker or a threat from seeing what's inside of rooms and prevent the visibility of potential targets. We're also transitioning to a new emergency communication platform, where communication of staff and guardians can be pushed out with the press of a button on a desktop computer or mobile device through an app, and that's called Informacast Fusion. We are going to be transitioning as the PA project. It's all hand-in-hand. We are looking to have school staff that have gone through and completed the Alice instructor training to teach Alice training and scenarios with school staff at their respective schools. We are also exploring vape detectors in the school restrooms throughout the district. We are also ensuring all classroom door locking mechanisms throughout the district are in working order, and working to repair or replace any classroom or interior door locks that do not have the ability to lock and secure. So, I've been going around to some of the older schools especially, and speaking with the Director of Facilities, Rob Marashi, and working to get all those classroom doors fixed so that they are able to lock and secure in case of an emergency situation. We are exploring a future purchase of Go Buckets for all classrooms throughout the district. So, these buckets are widely encouraged in the event of a lockdown, where staff and students cannot leave the room for an extended period of time. These buckets hold essential supplies, as well as can be used when restroom facilities are unavailable, as the bucket comes equipped with a toilet seat cover. I'm also working in conjunction with our Director of Facilities to assess building key distribution and accountability, see who has what access to what buildings. And we are also exploring adding a scanner, so similar to what we do at the main entrance of EHS with tardy students, but adding a scanner in the EHS nurse's office, which directly inputs information to our school management system, and this will help create an accurate timestamp of each student that visits the nurse, as well as assist with printing out passes for the students.
Thank you, Ms. O'Connor. We have any questions? Mayor D. Maria, then Ms. Lambert.
Director O'Connor, how long have you been working for us?
Since July.
Since July?
Yep.
I'm impressed.
Thank you.
I'm very impressed of what you have done, what's being done, and what you plan on doing. What a great presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor D. Maria. Ms. Lambert?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you to Ms. O'Connor. So, and I... I'm having a problem with my mic. I'm so sorry.
That's okay.
So, I do have some data. I had some, I think there's a lot of great things, a lot of housekeeping things that just need to be taken care of facilities-wise, but I do have, my very first month on the school committee, now this was a while ago, we had an unannounced canine sweep, and a number of families reached out to me, including a student who explained that dogs are used as weapons in his home country by police. So, the combination of seeing police, having your bag down, you couldn't access, it was very, you know, sit with your hands on the table and let the dog do, it was a very jarring experience. So, my recommendation was going to be to refer this, not sure if the DEI Committee or there's another more appropriate committee, because also, some of the, you know, your expertise in security is so key, but it also has to be partnered with the, you know, whether we adopt or store of justice practices alongside it. What does the environment say to our students? What are the logistics if you have a screening system, which I assume is a metal detector, and the cost, the staffing cost, what the intrusion may feel like to a student as they're starting their learning day? And I know that there's reasons for the recommendations, but I also think it's worth exploring just a little deeper, and I think maybe a committee would be in there, but I know the more present in what we are doing, if maybe as you're building out that website, you could put a piece on that allows a two-way communication with you, so that maybe just have a type of survey, so that you can poll families, especially that are not familiar with necessarily our security, or that may be unfamiliar, jarring, or feel penalizing, you know, is this what you think of us type of feeling? So, just another level of engagement, and I don't know if... My original thought was the DEI Committee, so we can explore it, but I'd be open to if there's another committee that you feel.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Lambert. Mr. McLaughlin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to our invited guest. Good evening, Ms. O'Connor.
Hi, good evening.
Nice to see you. Ms. O'Connor, I would also echo the comments of the mayor, which is that your report in the job that you've done since July is extremely impressive. I have just a couple of quick questions on your presentation, if you won't mind. One is the purchase of the handheld metal detector. So, there's 1 at Everett High School? So, not every student is utilizing this 1, right? Is this, if an incident occurs, that it's in the building to be able to be utilized? Is that the intent of?
Yes, so, to answer your question, we do have a few students that are on safety plans that we work with the deans and school administration at Everett High. There's select students that have had issues in the past where they have had weapons or found to be posting weapons, so they are on safety plans. So, those select students, we go into one of the dean's offices, and they do that daily when they come in.
Great. Again, all of these steps are tremendous. I just have 2, one last question, which is, if you know this, how many teachers, and kudos to the superintendent and administration, which is Alice. I had the opportunity to take an Alice program training last year. It was a Saturday. It was several hours long, but it was very helpful in the... And the police officer who, I believe it was a police officer from Georgetown who performed the class was extremely informative, and I learned a lot from it, and a lot that I didn't know. I'm just wondering how many faculty members have gone through the same type of training? Because I found it to be so beneficial, and I don't work in the school, right? I can't imagine how beneficial it is to a teacher who has a classroom full of 20, 30 students that could benefit from this same program.
Yeah, so all the teachers at the beginning of the year are required to do the online portion. For the train the trainer, I think they gave me a list from last year, it was before I was here, but I want to say there were about 10 to 12 people, some of whom have moved on or are no longer employed. So that's why we want to get them back out here to have more training, to get more instructors. But there's about 10, and that's what we're going to use for them to teach some of the other staff and do a class like that, because they have material, because they are now a certified trainer. They have all the materials that they can actually teach some of the other staff members.
So there's 10 plus at the high school level, or that's throughout the district?
Throughout the district.
That's great. And as many as we can get trained. I think it's beneficial for everyone, for them to know what to do in a crisis situation. Again, thank you for the job that you've done. You've hit a home run since July. Keep going. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McLaughlin. Ms. Sonny?
Thank you. What do we do about the fighting in the school? If fights take place, what's the protocol? Who's breaking them up? Who, what is?
Yep, so I can speak for, at the high school, if there's a fight, it goes over the radio, and pretty much the first people to respond. So you're going to have the success coaches, you're going to have myself. The security that I employ through Madison, it's a third company, they do not, we don't want that liability. It's everyone from the school, so the deans will go there. Or even some teachers, if it happens near their room, they jump in and try and de-escalate and try and get the two parties away from each other. But mostly, that's how it goes, is whoever's on the radio, if it's a success coach, if it's a dean, if it's myself, whoever gets there first will kind of de-escalate the situation, get them away from each other, take them to separate areas, and then, you know, we'll view footage, and then we'll go from there.
Okay. Because I know in the past, you know, seeing a video of, you know, girls fighting, mashing a girl's head, no one stepped in at all for a while, and it was horrible to see.
Yeah.
And I know, talking to family members, teachers, saying that no one knows who's going to break it up because they're afraid of liability themselves today with lawsuits. So is that something they were to be worried about? That if the teachers break up a fight, or a custodian break up a fight? I mean, who, is there a liability on them as well if they did?
I can't speak on the liability. What I can speak on is, since I've been there at the high school, there's never been a hesitation from any staff members to go in and separate the parties. I've seen a number of fights, whether it was on camera, whether I got there after the fact, but it's never been a thing of contention where nobody would step in for fear of liability. It's just you act when you see it. So thankfully, that's been the case since I've been there.
And I'm not sure, maybe the superintendent, I'm not sure if she'll be able to answer. Do we have insurance, so if that does happen, that a teacher or someone breaks the fight up? Are they covered under our policy? Do we know for liability?
We have just our typical insurance. So if you were to file a worker's comp or something like that, that would be covered under that.
Thank you so much. And I think you did a great job so far too as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Sonny. Ms. Cardillo?
Lauren O'Vidoo, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
I haven't met you yet, and pleased to meet you.
Thank you.
I've been discussing the concerns with security and what have we done with the superintendent recently, and she gave you rave reviews.
Thanks.
So I hope you don't mind me saying that, but she really did. She gave you rave reviews. And listening and looking at this chart of what you've done in a short period of time, very impressive. So thank you, and I'm just so happy you're here with us. So again, welcome aboard, and we're here for you as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Seeing no other speakers, a motion?
Actually, I was going to refer, I was going to refer the items.
Before we do that, Ms. Lambert, I'm sorry to interrupt. We have to dismiss, a proper thing would be.
Well, excuse what customary thanks.
We have a motion, Mr. McLaughlin, and seconded by Ms. Lambert, to excuse Ms. O'Connor what a customary thanks. All those in favor? All those opposed, the ayes have it. Now, Ms. Lambert.
I will refer this to the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee just for further review and exploration for the impacts.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Lambert, excuse me, Lambert, seconded by Mr. McLaughlin to refer to the DEI committee for further discussion. All those in favor? All those opposed, the ayes have it. Madam Superintendent, the next item, please. Privilege or information? Mr. McLaughlin, on point of information?
Just on a point of information, I wanted to be remiss if I didn't, wish our colleague and friend from Ward III a happy birthday this evening. Jeannie Christiano's birthday is tonight, and the reason that she left early is to go celebrate with her children and her grandchildren. But we wanted to wish her a very happy birthday this evening. And unfortunately, for the second year in a row, we didn't bring her a birthday cake from Elm Street Bakery. We'll have to make it up to her. But wish her a happy birthday from all of us.
Thank you, Mr. McLaughlin. Madam Superintendent, the next item.
Thank you. Item number three is approval to resubmit a statement of interest for a new school. So on behalf of the school department, I am seeking permission to submit a statement of interest to the Massachusetts School Building Authority to build a new school. As many of you know, we are severely overcrowded across the district. I'm making the recommendation that the school committee request that the mayor and the city council approve the statement of interest to be submitted to the MSBA. This is just the first of a multi-step process. Having convened in an open meeting on March 6, 2023, prior to the SOI submission closing date, the School Committee of Everett, in accordance with its charter, bylaws, and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendents to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the Statement of Interest Form dated March 6, 2023, for Everett High School located at 100 Elm Street, which describes and explains the following deficiencies and the priority categories for which an application may be submitted to the MSBA in the future. Everett High School, built to house 1,800 students, is currently 447 students over capacity. Enrollment at the lower grades is increasing. The Everett Public Schools is submitting the Statement of Interest based on two priorities: elimination of existing severe overcrowding and prevention of severe overcrowding that is expected to result from increased enrollments, and hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting the Statement of Interest Form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant, or any other funding commitment from the MSBA, or commits the Everett School District to filing an application for funding with the MSBA.
Make a motion for favorable.
Take a wait for that. Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Now, Mr. McLaughlin.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, make a motion for favorable action on the request to file the, submit the interest for a new school.
Second motion.
We have a motion by Mr. McLaughlin, seconded by Ms. Cardillo, for favorable action to submit a statement of interest for a new school. Roll call, hold on then, Mr. O'Connor, please. Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardillo?
Yes.
Mr. LaMonica?
Yes.
Mr. Marcus?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Chairman Magan?
Yes.
Passes 6-0. The motion passes 6-0. Thank you, Mr. O'Connor. Madam Superintendent, the next item, please.
Thank you. Item number four is approval for students from the STEB Club to travel to Miami, Florida to compete in the National 1080 Student Racing Competition, which takes place on April 28th and 29th of this year. As I mentioned earlier, tonight, we do have the funds needed to pay for this trip. It does not require a special appropriation. I would ask for your approval, just as you have done in the past when opportunities like this present themselves.
Favorable action. Second, the motion?
We have a motion by Mr. Marcus, seconded by Mr. McLaughlin, for favorable action. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Mr. Barrows? Ms. Cardillo? Mr. LaMonica?
Yes.
Mayor D. Maria?
Yes.
Mr. Marcus?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Chairman Magan?
Yes.
So moved, 7-0. 7-0, you have passed. Madam Superintendent, please read the next item.
Thank you. Item number five is to request approval of a hometown grant in the amount of $10,000 from New England Dairy. This grant was awarded to the Lafayette School as part of a collaboration between the New England Patriots Foundation Adopt a School program that we highlighted during our February 6 meeting. The Lafayette School is planning to use the funds to purchase two Grab and Go breakfast carts, one for each entrance to the building, as well as a variety of sports equipment. I respectfully request your approval.
Favorable action on the grant being executed.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. McLaughlin, seconded by Mr. Marcus, for favorable action. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Mr. Barrows? Ms. Cardillo?
Yes.
Mr. LaMonica?
Yes.
Mayor D. Maria?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. Marcus?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Chairman Magan?
Yes.
So moved, 8-0. 8-0, you have passed. The motion, Madam Superintendent, the next item, please.
Thank you. Roman numeral nine, are bills and payroll?
I make a motion to submit bills and payroll in the amount of $2,705,829.67.
We have a motion by Ms. Lambert, seconded by Mr. Barrows, for favorable action to submit bills and payroll in the amount of $2,705,829.67. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardillo?
Yes.
Mr. LaMonica?
Yes.
Mayor D. Maria?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. Marcus?
Yes.
Chairman Magan?
Yes.
So moved, 7-0.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to pay bills and payrolls in the amount of $2,705,829.67.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Lambert, seconded by Mr. Barrows, to pay bills and payroll in the amount of $2,705,829.67. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardillo?
Yes.
Mr. LaMonica?
Yes.
Mayor D. Maria?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. Marcus?
Yes.
Chairman Magan?
Yes.
So moved, 7-0. You have approved that payment, that amount. Madam Chair, next item.
A motion to adjourn?
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Lambert to adjourn, seconded by Mr. LaMonica. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. We are adjourned. Thank you.